Call our meeting to order at this time, Mr. Steele, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orth. Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. At this time, we'll have our invocation by Pastor Daniel McGee, and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Jamison Corbett, Petford Elementary School, third grader.
Lord Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to gather and to accomplish what it is you have in store for this community. Lord, you say in your word that the gift of leadership is administered to your people, and those leaders are to lead diligently. And Lord, I pray for the spirit of excellence and diligence in the matters that matter in this community. Lord, I pray that we lay aside all of our selfish ambition, vain conceit, and look after the interests of others, which is why God has put us in the positions to serve the people of this community. May your will be done in this meeting and in every meeting going forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jamison. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Jamison. Next on our agenda, approval of the minutes from May the 20th, May the 28th, June the 3rd, and June the 17th.
So moved, second.
Moving to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is the adoption of the agenda.
So moved, second.
Moving to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Moving to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Matters presented by the board. Any matters presented by the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to county administrator items.
Yes, I'm glad to remind the audience here and at home about a couple upcoming events. On Saturday, October 18th, there'll be Clean Gloucester Day, and the people can register if they haven't already with our Clean Community Office to help clean our roads, along the roads. On the same day, we will be having the Harmful Waste Collection that starts at 9:00 a.m. at the Guinea Convenience Center. And then the next day, on Sunday, October 19th, we will have our first ever Homestead Market, which will be from 12:00 to 5:00 at the Old Page School Site. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. This time, we're going to move on to scheduled presentations. General Assembly update by the Honorable M. Keith Hodges, Delegate 68 District. Yes, sir.
That was fast, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at the agenda thinking, might be here for a while. I love efficiency, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be with you and, you know, always come everywhere every year and talk to localities, and that's the main thing. Just talk and maybe bring you up to date on some of the things that we're working on and the general somewhat some well, some things that happen and maybe some things that we're working on in the future. But first, I'd like to just say thank you for what you do each and every day. Local government, I couldn't do it. And I work with Ms. Steele quite a bit and have meetings, and we talk about local issues, and this is where the rubber meets the road. And it's very difficult. It gets personal at the local level versus the state or the federal level, and takes a great deal of your time and your efforts and a lot of guts to do what you're doing. So I appreciate what you're doing. So, you know, and the General Assembly is started out in January. I like to say that every session is different, and this one definitely started out with different. If you remember what happened at the start of the session, you remember what happened? No water in the General Assembly. So that set us back. And of course, there was no big push from some folks to really catch up and meet late and to have extra meetings. That kind of set us behind a little bit, but at the end of the day, we were able to get some things done. As usual, we probably had about thirty-five hundred bills and resolutions to deal with during a typical session. And this was a short session, a 30-day session, that we dealt with instead of a 45-day session where we actually take up the entire budget. Of course, it was what we call a non-budget year, but it's just as busy, if not busier, because we're a biannual budget, which is two-year cycle. And, you know, the budget is a living, breathing document with revenues and expenditures. You adjust for both on each side and make adjustments. So it's actually a little bit more hectic than normal. But at the end of the day, I think overall, it's a good budget. Every budget has its goods and bads, but I think at the end of the day, we ended up with something pretty good. I mean, the budget's that thick when you look at it. And, you know, if you don't like everything in it, there's some things you don't like, but I think the good far outweighed the bad. The one thing I'd like to highlight is, of course, the revenue that comes into the General Assembly over the two years is probably about $185 billion that we deal with in serving on appropriations. It's a lot to deal with. And out of that, I would say about $67 billion of that is, you know, general funds, which actually comes from the state, the taxpayers, and so forth. The rest, probably about $117, $18 billion roughly in that neighborhood, is what we call non-general funds, filtering down through the federal government and different programs, coming down to the localities and education and so forth. So typically, the non-general fund, we have very little control over those dollars, and it's very difficult to make some of the decisions. There may be some leeway, but overall, we have very, very little leeway in those dollars. The, of course, when we signed that, we were able to give some rebates and some dollars back to taxpayers. That's something I definitely fought for. Doesn't sound like much, but it's $200 per individual, $400 for individual tax filers. I mean, $200 per individual, $400 for joint filers, roughly $1.1 billion back to taxpayers. But the one thing we have to look at is changing the standardized deduction, which really is going to change long-term how you put money in people's pockets, because we increased that from $8,750 to $17,500 for individuals. And, I'm sorry, $17,500 for married couples filing jointly for the tax year. So we increased that, which is, in the long term, that's going to put money in people's pockets, which is very important, and especially the hard-working Virginians. I think that was something that's very important. And we did all of this without raising taxes. That was very important. We were able to make additional contributions into education, into healthcare, and in our infrastructure. A lot of that, of course, infrastructure was focusing on business-ready sites and so forth as well, which we don't have in here in the Middle Peninsula, but talk a little bit about how we can focus on the Middle Peninsula a little bit. But we were able to take $900 million and put that into kind of a rainy day fund, kind of a cushion for the unknown that's going on within the federal government, because there are a lot of unknowns right now. So the governor was able to do that. He made thirty-seven, there were thirty-seven items in the budget, primarily coming from capital improvements within our colleges and universities to offset that and put $900 million into that fund to offset any potential problems that we may have. Of course, we've invested in K-12 quite a bit, increasing that per pupil spending by about 53% per pupil since the pandemic, which is a big increase. That's a tremendous increase. And trying to give our teachers and everyone the ability to really get down and teach our students, you know, and working on developing math programs and different areas from the learning loss with COVID, which affected us quite a bit. And it's going to be years and years before we recover from that. I think there was an additional $780 million for public schools, but right now, it's the largest investment we've ever made in the increase in K-12 education overall, spending far more per pupil than we have in the past. So education, it remains a top priority and is a large percentage of our budget. As far as some of the things that you worry about in the budget, of course, the car tax, which is the number-one hated tax in Virginia, everyone agrees with that. But the thing is, in order for that to happen, we have to make our localities whole. No doubt about that, because you would be the ones that would be the losers. And if we get rid of the car tax, guess what? You're going to have to find a way to make it up somewhere else. And you can't put it on the backs of real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and so forth. So we've got to find a way to make that whole. Of course, broadband and, you know, expanding broadband is very important. The body grants are working very, very well in expanding that across the state. One thing I do believe we have to look at in the long run, because when we look at the people that live here and that telecommute, sure, they can live here and they can send their children to schools, but they're actually working for someone else where that business is located in an urban area. And they telecommute, they may work three days a week here and two days a week back there, but who's getting the lion's share of the tax benefit from the business? That urban area that has that business. So we really need to take a different look at that in the long run. And I'm having some discussions on how to do that, because we shouldn't be punished for, you know, trying to have broadband and develop business, but, you know, when it's only folks that are living here and then telecommuting, it actually could be, in the long run, very stressful to the community. Let's see what else we got. Of course, public safety is non-negotiable for me. There were some things that were shot down. Number one, we're looking at earned, enhanced earned sentence credits that really risk putting dangerous criminals back on our streets. Don't agree with that. But then we also have to hold our dealers accountable for things that happen. And I can't tell you the number of people I've talked to over the years that have lost a loved one or a child from overdose. And those folks should be held accountable. And we're working hard on that, and hopefully, we'll get that. And that's something we'll continue to fight on, fight, you know, fight for. This right here is the downfall of society. Sorry, but it is. I grew up on a party line, and we got things done. We solve problems. We work together, and somehow, we got things done. Now, kids are on this 24/7. Adults are on it 24/7. It's contributing to mental health problems, lost work time. And believe me, the social media folks, actually, there are things in there that trap you in there. So once you get on, guess what? You end up down a rabbit hole in the long run. So I actually had introduced legislation a couple of years ago, which some folks kind of fought back against, but we were able to get it passed this past year that allows parents to limit social media activity for children under 16 years old, unless the parent has the ability to change that in the long run. And that's a good thing. People need to learn to talk to each other, how to interact, to be able to, you know, to be able to develop the skill set to work out in the real world. And if you're on this 24/7, it's not going to happen. Of course, with the governor's executive order, we have what you call the bill-to-bill. It's not law, but it came down through executive order where children cannot use their cell phones between the first bell and the last bell. And that's a good thing. And we had some localities here in the district that had done that prior to that executive order, and they were seeing tremendous success, because our children are our future, and they need to have the skill sets to be able to raise a family, to live here and to work here, and, you know, to be the best person that they are. So I'll just leave it at that. Of course, local authority preservation is very important. You know, locality, you need to preserve the local authority to make your own decisions. Of course, there was a push this past year on solar development to make it statewide, where state would say, this is what you do across the state. It's a one-size-fits-all, and forcing you to be able to do that. It's up to you to make those decisions, not the state. And we should not be able to tell you exactly what, you know, you should have to do. You're also looking at accessory dwelling units, which is another can of worms, where there's a one-size all across the state for these accessory dwelling units to say, localities, this is what you have to do on your property if someone wants to add on, if they want to have their mother-in-law, or if we want to rent it, or whatever we want to do for, you know, for affordable housing. But Northern Virginia, here in the Middle Peninsula, Southwest Virginia, the Valley, we're all different. And the state should not dictate across the board to localities on how to do this. Personally, I believe affordable housing, I think I passed something a few years ago, giving locality some tools. I don't know if anyone's taken advantage of that, but it just hit me. I can't remember exactly what that legislation was, but we really have the ability here in the Middle Peninsula now to take some of the homes that are not being used. I mean, you look at the number of homes that have been turned off with electricity over the past year. We did that a few years ago. And the number of homes that we have here in the Middle Peninsula that have been turned off for a year and sitting vacant, what can we develop as far as programs and what we can do and to utilize those for affordable housing? Of course, I always like to talk about some of, well, let me bring this up. Sore subject for some folks, great subject for some folks, but the big, beautiful pill that's coming down from Washington, and how it would affect localities and how it will affect the state. There's still a lot of unknowns with that. And we're preparing very well. There could be something to be concerned about in many ways, but there's also some very good things out of that as well. But right now, there are a number of unknowns where they've said, you know, by now, we'd lose 32,000 jobs. It's roughly been 10,000 in Virginia. They said we would be roughly 250,000 in a deficit in Virginia. Right now, we're looking at a $1.7 billion surplus, mainly from withholding taxes. Virginia's economy is very strong. We're doing very well to be able to handle a lot of this. And it's actually projected that may go up by another $250 million with the surplus. So there are a lot of unknowns with this, but there are some good things as well. Over the last, you know, week or so, I've been working on the rural health transnational grants, to look at rural health and the opportunities to make a difference in people's lives and our health systems and all of the above, because, you know, when you look at life expectancy, and I've looked at some of the studies with this, comparing some of the urban areas in Northern Virginia versus some of the areas in rural Virginia, it can be up to 20 years difference in life expectancy. That's a problem. That's a big problem. So we're addressing this in many ways. We're looking at, you know, the Middle Peninsula, I've said this many times, and you've heard me say it, at least 76% of the folks that live in the Middle Peninsula out community each and every day. You see it going across the Coleman Bridge. You see it going north. You see it going through West Point to Williamsburg to Richmond and all across the district. It's over 80% in Matthews, and we only have 38 private sector employers in the Middle Peninsula with 50 more people. And the folks that stay behind have the lowest wages in the state. And that's concerning, because we're not keeping our children here, at least giving them the opportunity to be able to stay here. So let's give them, at least give them the opportunities to stay here. So that's kind of where I've been focused. And healthcare is, you know, of course, our largest employer in the Middle Peninsula with two hospitals and our physician's network, physician network. So we're looking at being able to create jobs, make people healthier, and make a difference in their lives. You know, I created a sonography program here at the Rappahannock Community College. There was a need within the hospitals. It's been very, very successful. So we're looking at some other opportunities as well to start training our children, you know, even at a younger age, to look at healthcare as far as a career and be able to live here and stay here, make a difference in people's lives. Of course, we also have to look at other opportunities across the Middle Peninsula. We don't have the infrastructure to be able to bring, you know, these large businesses and so forth, nor do we actually want that. That's something for our localities to decide, to decide. Do we want that Lego plant? Do we want that Rolls-Royce plant? Because it will actually change us. So we need to look at it a different way. And some people think I'm crazy on how I look at things a little bit, but, you know, for every negative, there's a positive. I truly believe that. And you take that negative and you try to turn it into jobs. And I've talked to Mr. Orth quite a bit about this, but blue catfish, of course, and y'all have heard me talk about it, invasive species. And to me, it's the number-one threat to the bay. And I believe the state records 140 pounds. They'll swallow 400,000 rockfish eggs in a single gulp. They eat shad, they eat herring, they eat enough peanut bunkers, which are the small man hayden, to prevent a million tons from reaching adult size and entering the bay each year. Omega pole's at 58,000 tons. That's a big difference. And I have a picture on my phone. It's one probably about this long. It's had 23 crabs in it. So it's destroying our seafood industry. So I said, let's eat our way out of it. People thought I was crazy. I created the funding mechanism for processing flash freeze facilities and to get money into Waterman's hands. We had, I wanted 4 million. I got 250,000, but was able to increase that to 500,000. We've now had, you know, grant funding here locally to be able to do that. And I'm even working with prisons as far as, you know, processing, which can help with recidivism. And we can sell it to other states. We can take it to our schools. And so we can create jobs out of that. Of course, dredging is a tremendous problem. You know, with all of the creeks we have in the Middle Peninsula, across the Middle Peninsula, Northern Eck and Eastern Shore. And dredging is, of course, you know, it's very important, because our marinas and our seafood industry, it's our bread and butter. It's the lifeblood of our communities. So as this, you know, has moved along, when the federal government funded dredging through earmarks, that's gone away. And I believe it's Gloucester County that we actually were able to finally look at this and show that for every negative one change in depth, there's a 14% decrease in property value. That makes, that shit hits you hard on your tax base. So then the boats aren't coming into our marinas. You don't have, you're not selling the bait. People aren't buying gas. You're not fishing. And it really affects these industries. So we were able to get $8 million in the waterway maintenance fund, but had a hard time getting to that, because we had it over at the Port Authority, transferred it over to VMRC this year. So it'll be much easier to be able to access those funding, that funding, and to get these creeks dredged. And actually, in the long run, we're looking at a municipal dredge program that can go through the three regions and to be able to solve this problem, which will make a difference in our local economies. So, you know, it's a big challenge here, because when you look at the state and the federal programs that are available for economic development, when you lay all of those across a map, the entire state's covered, except the Middle Peninsula, Northern Eck, and the Eastern Shore. And that's my number-one challenge, is to educate other legislators how unique and different we are. And it's not only urban areas, but it's also other rural areas, because you have four distinct regions in Virginia with rural. You have the Valley with advanced manufacturing. I need to talk that. That just hit me. I need to talk about that, too. But then you have South Side, the Tobacco Commission, Southwest Virginia with the coal, and you have us. We're considered fully employed, but everybody's working somewhere else, and we don't have that business tax base. So that's what we have to do to think differently and to create jobs in a different way. And of course, flooding and resiliency has been number-one for me. And we're getting there. Have a meeting tomorrow to talk with some folks about some different projects. And because of the Living Shorelines bill I tweaked a few years ago, we have 39 companies that want to do business in Virginia, 19 of those in the Middle Peninsula. One of those is actually a dredging company. Well, they'll take the dredge spoils, because, sorry, not a dredging company, they'll take the dredge spoils, because the problem is, is find a place to put those dredge spoils with the core. They can turn it into an aggregate material. It can be used in living shorelines, and oysters are going to strike on it 100 to 1 over granite. And we've actually have a number of other areas of opportunity that we're looking at as far as carbon, carbon credits. We're revitalizing the Virginia's healthy watershed to invest in silver culture with carbon, because every time a plan lands at Dallas, they've got to offset with carbon credits. So I passed legislation allowing the EDAs to stitch land together, and they only want to write one check, no less than seven figures. So you can filter that down to the landowners. But we've also proven that with oysters. So I've actually have a meeting tomorrow to be able to look at some things where we can put oyster growing on steroids on this. This is trillions of dollars worldwide that we're leaving on the table. And everyone talks about the Chesapeake Bay and the oysters. We are leaving money on the table. And this can make a tremendous difference in our economy. Heck, I'm even, people think I'm crazy. I actually stayed up the other night. It was, you know, the ballgame. I won't mention which ballgame, because some people will probably, I'm not one team versus the other, but I stayed up later and working on a project like I always do, I'm brainstorming. And you've heard me talk about the phragmites for years, the invasive grass. And I really started to look at it even deeper and harder in harvesting that for a biomass material and what that could really mean to our economy. We have thousands of acres of that, thousands of acres. And looking at that where it's done in other parts of the world, 1,000 acres of harvesting phragmites, and believe me, you have the equipment that you can drive. It's pretty cool, actually. You can drive. They have these squishy tires. You can't even tell it when over the marsh. You can harvest it, turn it into a biomass material. You can make it into the fuel pellets, which was one of our number-one exports going out of the United States. It burns as hot as wood. There's more ash. But what you're doing is you're removing nitrogen and phosphorus, because that sucks up more nitrogen and phosphorus than anything else. And, you know, and it dies. It goes back in. We're removing it, turning it into a biomass material. And at 1,000 acres, there's enough biomass material to produce enough energy to be able to power 2,000 homes a year, just in biomass at 1,000 acres. And we can increase that. It's, I'm not going to say, but we have, you look statewide, what we have, it's a tremendous number. We can turn that into an opportunity. And the energy that it produces, the jobs that we create, and I was looking at the cost of nitrogen and phosphorus removal from some of these wastewater facilities, up to $40 a pound. We're not looking at the cost. We're looking at making money out of it. Now, it's not as much as the wastewater facilities, but it's making a difference in the Chesapeake Bay overall, and we've turned it into jobs. So some people think I'm a little bit nuts, but I've got, I'm going to be talking with somebody about that tomorrow more. I've already talked with some folks. Of course, FEMA has been an issue, and it's an ongoing problem regarding FEMA coming into auditing localities on, you know, on the permits. And what FEMA actually is saying from the federal government, they're saying the locality, it's up to you to ensure any and all permits are issued when there's anything for anything that's disturbed in the flood plain. You put a shovel in the ground. You put in a culvert pipe. You put in cable. VDOT, if you build a bridge, or, you know, VDOT, if you do a culvert pipe. So they've come in and they VDOT bridges, y'all don't deal with VDOT permits, but they're dinging the locality over that. So locality gets dinged. Guess what? If they get dinged again, flood insurance can go up for everyone in the entire locality. That is not good. So finally, after pushing back on DCR, who kind of pushed back, said it wasn't that responsibility, just this week, we have a final document that's going down for public comment to develop a model ordinance on what they call the RAD process, to give guidance to the localities on this, so you don't get in trouble and you can protect yourselves, because that would really hurt your property values with the flood insurance premiums that people would have to pay. And, you know, the bureaucracy is what really drives me crazy, more than anything else. Of course, we had a couple of wins. Of course, the Coleman Bridge, tolls were finally removed on the Coleman Bridge after many years of working on that. So the wait to be seen, I'm looking at revitalizing that corridor and cleaning that up and getting some funding for that. And actually, I've been in conversations with the Secretary of Transportation and trying to get some things in the governor's budget to be able to clean that corridor. The Norris Bridge was actually a big win. And to tell you honestly, that bridge would never be built today. You know, at the length of it and the cost of it, and at only 7,500 cars, it would never be built. I created the critical infrastructure legislation. I created the, the, the critical infrastructure legislation in 2019, introduced that, creating this fund, but we weren't putting enough money into it. So, we were created and we're able to come up with a solution and make it eight years ahead of schedule and to be able to, to build that bridge. So, that was a big win here for the localities. Of course, what's that?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
When are they taking the toll booths down at the Coleman Bridge?
What's that?
When are they taking the toll booths down?
I don't know yet, that's something I'm working on and when, when, when we're going to take them down and to revitalize the entire thing.
Because I'm hearing if we have a different governor, they might put the tolls back on again.
It's not happening, not, not under me, but I highly doubt that. Oh, sorry. Nope, that's not, that's not, that's, that actually is an alarm to remind me of something else I said yesterday, so. No call, it's a toll call. But yeah, it's not, I'd, I'd highly doubt that because we did get bipartisan support on that. So, I think, I think we're good on that. A lot of people are worried about growth, but I mean, say, I had to say this, but it's up to localities, I mean, you can control the growth through your constant comprehensive plans, your zoning and so forth, and the state really doesn't put tolls to be able to control growth. It's not something we do. I mean, I think in overall, the citizens of the Commonwealth are better off and here in Gloucester and, you know, all the, all, and all of the people that actually utilize that each day because it's, you know, from the commuters and the people that drive it, they were tired of it. So, we were finally able to work with the secretary and to be able to get that done. So, we were, that was very important. Of course, you know, VDH and as far as, and I don't mind saying this publicly, many of our agencies don't know how to get to yes. See, Mr. Supervisor Crisco going that way. I mean, we talk, how many times have we had VDH down and met with people and talked to folks in different agencies because here we are, we're trying to get to yes and they don't know how to get there. So, we end up bringing folks down from Richmond, we end up sitting down and having meetings and I don't hear about it until the end. I shouldn't have to hear about it at all because the intent of the legislation and the regulations, it's clear, but yet they want to interpret it a certain way and they want to say no. It's tying up permitting, increasing costs to, to, to people across the district and we see it with many of our agencies. So, I actually was able to get through VDH this past year to come up with a, with different plans and basically how to get to yes, I'm not going to get into the specifics of it, but they were agreed to do that and it's basically a how to get to yes bill. So, we don't have to deal with that and to be able to streamline things. I'm also working on it with VMRC. Of course, VIMs is a scientific advisor to the Commonwealth on Flooding and Resiliency, but to tell you honestly, you know, VMRC actually takes VIMs word as gospel on these things, but, and I, and I, and I talk to VIMs about it all of the time, they don't have the coastal engineers, they don't have the soil scientists, and we need to be able to do something a little bit different. So, I'm working on that. So, I'm working on trying to streamline to get the expertise on the permitting that we need, that the secretary can go, we've got a particular project where you have the expertise, VIMs, you've got expertise here, OD, you've got it here, Virginia Tech, or at least come together and be able to solve that. So, it, it, that, that makes a big difference because we don't want to be able to tie up, you know, the time and people's money in the permitting process. So, I mean, I can keep going on and on and on and on and on and I can talk all night, Mr. Chairman. But, you know, the thing is, the bureaucracy does, I mean, that's one of the number one things that kind of drives me crazy in Richmond because, you know, and being in business and working all those years, we're used to getting things done. And sometimes bureaucracy just, just drives me a little bit crazy. But overall, I think, you know, the vision, you know, for the middle peninsula and northern neck and the eastern shore, you know, is in our rural coastal region, we all need to work together to be able to solve some of these problems. We have, you know, our opportunities, we have our challenges, but in the end, we need to educate the folks in Richmond and we need to work towards a, you know, that, that common goal to be able to achieve that. Everyone's looking for that big win when they're elected. I realize that from day one, that's not going to happen. So, it's baby steps on how to get there and that's kind of my goal and that's what I'm working on. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Board, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Sorry I went so long, but I can go a lot longer.
Thank you, Delegate Hodges. Uh, Mr. Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you Delegate Hodges for your overview, for your hard work down at the General Assembly, I appreciate it and we all appreciate it. I just want to flag one issue that you mentioned, broadband, which ties in with economic development, which is a, an ongoing issue for the middle peninsula. And as you know, the federal government allocated $42.45 billion in the BEAD program to provide broadband to those who don't have a viable broadband solution. And I represent the Petsworth District, we are greatly deficient in broadband out in the northern end of our county. I think there are about 5,000 residents who don't have access to broadband, most of them live in, in Petsworth. And these gentlemen are going to cringe when I bring up my favorite example here, but we used to get things done in America. The Empire State Building was built in one year and 45 days. We defeated two military dictatorships in World War II in four years. We are five years from the allocation of almost $43 billion and not one home has been connected to broadband. And I'm not placing blame on you and I know there's a morass of red tape that is impeding this whole process. The reason I'm bringing this up is I would just urge you and your colleagues to put a greater level of urgency in working with the federal government, get this program moving, get these dollars allocated because I think it's, it was a very trendy topic for a long time, but it's sort of dropping down on the importance level. And this, this, it is so important for quality of life, for education, for economic development, and we are still waiting, year after year after year, for some attention to be focused on it. So, I know you're working very hard, I thank you for all your service, but if you could just bump that up on your priority list, I would appreciate it.
And, and thank you, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Everything's pumped up on my priority list and of course, that's very, very important. I tried years ago before the fiber even to come up with something totally different from the middle peninsula. And of course, then fiber started to come in, so we moved away from that. But it is very important, but unfortunately bureaucracy and red tape drives me crazy. And that's the holdup and to navigate through that as legislators, it's very difficult bringing federal bureaucrats and state bureaucrats together and then trying to be able to, to free those dollars up and to get where they need to be. It's very frustrating. It's very frustrating.
Any other questions for Delegate Hodges?
No other, thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, and thank you for what you do every day. Sorry it takes so long.
Thank you. Hope you're good. Okay, now, we're going to move on to our public comment period. And speakers can only speak on any topic, can speak on any topic except for the two items of our public hearing. There will be a separate time for, for you to speak during the public hearing. But right now, this is, speakers can only speak on a top, any topic except for the two items, public hearing. Good evening.
Bruce Olds, Ware District, President Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Chair, Vice Chair, Board, County Administrator and Attorney. To start off, I'd like to reflect back on a few meetings passed. On August 6th, 2024, public comments ran for an hour and nine minutes. Not going to be the case tonight, I don't think. But we had 20 people speak in favor of our department and their building project on Main Street. And the meeting ended with a motion, no RFP and look at funding the fire department as soon as possible, but it would have to be in the next budget year. Up to August 10th of this year, we had a joint meeting with the board, many questions were asked, many answers were given. But in the end, we established two workgroups with the Chair and Vice Chair, myself and two of our senior members to answer questions from Mr. Wilmot and, and others. And Dr. Orth stated, let's move forward quickly. 11 days later, the workgroup met at Station 1, we covered 16 questions from the April 10th meeting, some language tweaks and changes in dollar commitments. On June 20th this year, we submitted draft contracts via email to each board member and the county administrator and Mr. Wilmot was hand delivered. On June 14th, follow-up work meeting to discuss the draft contracts that were submitted on June 20th, tentative agenda items covered with the Board of Supervisors would be on the August 5th meeting and contract signing in September. August 12th, we received an email from the Board of Supervisors, sorry for the delay, we'll meet next week, R and O, for the September board meeting. Well, after the August 24th meeting, we geared up, took the ball and hit the ground running. Got our architectural firm to finish their plans. We've been working on alerting systems, IT systems, security systems, truck bay exhaust systems, interior office, classroom and living furnishings. Some months meeting, two nights a week, on top of answering their calls and training. October 2nd, we scored a first down in the red zone. Our building plans were approved and we have the county stamp. Site plans are coming soon. This time next month, we can go to bid. We need a contract with you approved. Costs are not coming down. And I'm not asking for a hurried decision, but due diligence, let's get the job done. To the two of you that are stepping down, I want to thank you for your past service, your past commitment and continue, excuse me, continued support to Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Someone has big shoes to fill. We are looking forward to working with our new board to serve the needs of the citizens of Gloucester County. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board, County Administrator, County Attorney. I just wanted to follow up with some additional information to our project. Oh, sorry, Joe Lenderman, Petsworth District, Assistant Chief of EMS for Gloucester Fire and Rescue, Chairman of the Long Range Building Committee. I'm, I'm putting the work behind a lot of the going on with the architects and everybody else associated with this and it's been a lot of work. Like he said, we've got approval with a stamp for our building plan, so we appreciate the county services that have helped us out, answering questions and getting that process through. Today at 4 o'clock, we finally received our comment section for our site plans, which we knew were going to have some extensive things because site plans always do. And we are getting together in the next week or two to meet with everybody to polish that up and get another finished product off, hopefully one more time for approval. That being said, we have started progressing towards a bidding situation where we have talked to several different construction companies that are very interested in coming in and working with us in Gloucester County to build our building. It's been interesting seeing them coming to us and asking, when are we going to get started? When can we get this bid process going? I plan as part of, as the lead of the committee, to have our bid package ready to go at the end of this month and ready to be out there with those guys so we can get shovels in the ground and get this done before any price changes come around and it costs us more money. We need this project, our building is not in good shape and we need to move forward and we're being very efficient with our time and we just request that you keep in consideration and be as efficient with us as you have been going forward. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, Ms. Cronin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have one comment that was submitted from Kenny Hogg Senior, Gloucester Point District. Tonight, you will discuss the county's legislative priorities. Will this board finally request legislation that will provide state-level grant funding to improve and expand our public water and sewer systems or will you continue down the same path of inaction when it pertains to our public utilities? Speaking of Utilities Department, the last monthly department report from Utilities was for the month of June, there are no reports for July and August. I can't wait to hear the excuse for this deficiency. What is the status of the AMI system installation? What is the status of the Gloucester Point Water Tower improvements? I could ask a lot more questions pertaining to the monthly reports, but it would be futile because this board and administration have made it perfectly clear that everything pertaining to our public utilities is of lesser priority than everything else you have been elected and hired to manage and supervise. Now that Mr. Baines is retired, who is performing water and sewer construction plan review, are they experienced in water and sewer systems engineering disciplines? If they are not, you are making another grave mistake. It appears Utilities believes they can encroach upon private property without obtaining property owner's permission to do so. I have witnessed this myself in the presence of Supervisor Orth. In that instance, a knock on a door and asking the property owner's permission was all that was needed. In other instances where private land disturbance was involved, written land disturbance and use agreements should have been executed before a land disturbance occurred. When did Utilities start replacing private sewer lines on private property with department assets and resources? It appears this occurred at a residence on Edge Hill Street. If this is true, why were all of the expenses foisted upon the rest of the sewer and water customers without our consent? There is a water line that traverses straight through the middle of a lot on Hollyview Drive. Utilities confirmed in a FOIA request response that the line does in fact cross the private property and that there is no easement, right-of-way, land use agreement or any other such legal instrument with the property owners allowing for the encroachment upon and/or use of the property. Our Utilities Department continues to be mismanaged and nothing at all is being done about it. Thanks for nothing. Kenny Hogg Senior, Gloucester Point. That was the only comment that was submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin. Okay, no further public comments and we'll move on to our public hearing. Our first public hearing to consider an application to reclassify 5.23 acres from FC1 and also a planned unit development, development condominium unit and private boat slips. Ms. Anne Juswitz.
Good evening. So, my PowerPoint is fairly long, so I'm going to try to rush through it, but if you have any additional questions as I'm going through it, just stop me and ask. So, this is a rezoning for a planned unit development formerly known as the Gloucester Point Marina. Its properties identified as 51239 and 51239A. It's owned by Three Sheets Oyster Company LLC and Daniel Lang is the applicant. It's 5.23 acres located along Marina Way, which is a private road at the end of Starkey Drive. It's currently a old Marina that's not very active and a residential dwelling and then surrounding land uses are residential property along Marina Way and Starkey Drive. To the west is Saris Creek and residential property in Jordan Marina and to the north is residential property as well as to the south, more residential property. The current zoning is single-family residential and the surrounding zoning is also single-family with some multifamily at the dockside development down there. So, the proposed development is to be a planned unit development, which is a, the type of zoning that you create your own zoning district. The intent, it's intended to permit the construction of 35 townhouse style condominium units with boat slips for individual residents through the planned unit development. There's going to be an internal road with 31 units and then four units, as you can see, are accessed to Starkey Drive through two shared driveways. There proposes a perimeter of five-foot buffer and a six-foot high wood privacy rent fence along all perimeters adjacent to residentially zoned properties. Only the six-foot high fence is without a vegetated buffer along the northern property line where there's an existing right-of-way. If you see along the northern property line, there's an existing right-of-way that was identified during the community meeting and the plan was revised to identify that and show it on the plan. Along Saris Creek, there is 100-foot RPA buffer and so that there will be no additional buffer along there. The PUD ordinance submitted The PUD ordinance submitted with the rezoning regulates permitted uses, maximum density, setback, building heights, parking requirements, street standards, and the maximum number of boat slips, among other zoning standards. And where the PUD ordinance doesn't identify required zoning standards, the county ordinance would apply. There was a proffer statement. I'll go through some of the proffers. They will, they're proposing to connect the public order and sewer, which is required for PUDs in the development district, and that's everything on that slide. So the original application that was submitted to the Planning Commission has been revised to address a lot of the comments that the Planning Commission and staff had, so I'm just going to go through those. They redesigned the utility plan to meet the requirements of our Department of Public Utilities. They revised the proffer statement to address that revised sewer design. They provided additional language for the private road to show that there will be an access easement to the house that currently uses that private drive. And then they also revised their PUD ordinance for the rear setback encroachment into the right-of-way that's there. They updated numbering formatted, boating slip regulations, setbacks along the private right-of-way, and they also revised conceptual plans to be consistent with their PUD ordinance. So all that was addressed subsequent to the Planning Commission, the original application. Additional work that was raised during the public meeting and prior to that, they confirmed appropriate connection availability for public water and capacity. They confirmed appropriate connection availability for the public sewer, provided additional documentation for the shower well location on adjacent property, confirmed underground storage tanks have been removed, confirmed active demolition permit for existing covered boat slips, and provided proof that they had paid their real estate taxes prior to the Planning Commission public hearing. So now I'll just go on to the staff analysis. So the zoning, single-family zoning district is intended to preserve existing residential areas and provide for future areas of similar character. Infill residential development is encouraged and permitted. Uses are limited to detached, single-family dwellings plus certain additional uses. So the minimum lot size with public orders, without, with public orders, without public orders, sorry, is thirty thousand square feet, and with public orders, who is ten thousand square feet. This could allow a maximum density for, with public sewer up to eight point seven-one units per acre, but that would be on a very high-density residential development, and everyone would have to have an accessory dwelling unit, which is very unlikely. So that is, you know, a very high density, but that would be the worst-case scenario if you had a very high-density residential brand-new development on public water and The PUD ordinance, zoning intent is to allow and encourage more unique, flexible, creative, and imaginative arrangements and mixes of land uses in site planning and development that are permitted, then are permitted through conventional land use requirements. There's several purposes of the district, and we included the PUD ordinance in your packet. As required through the PUD ordinance, they have to propose their own zoning through the ordinance. They have to provide a community impact statement, and then they have to provide a conceptual master plan. So that's all included in your packets. The PUD ordinance deals with the applicant's zoning. They associate permitted uses, density setbacks, height, parking, et cetera. So again, where additional standards are not applied for, the zoning ordinance would cover those. So this is just a summary of permitted uses. It's not totally inclusive, but you can see in our single-family, we allow a lot of uses by right, then some by special exception, and then some by conditional use permit, including a marina, and I'll cover that. There wasn't a marina approved for this several years ago. And then the PUD ordinance is really only allowing townhouse condominiums and the boat slips, and then a boat lift, dock, boat slip materials, and other water-dependent facilities. So they are limited to those uses through their ordinance. Again, this is the maximum residential density, again, you know, with accessory dwelling units and a very high-density subdivision, it could be pretty high, but that would be with only public water and sewer, and currently there is no sewer in that area, only water. On the setbacks, this, you know, it's funny, we worked on this so many times, but we've got to, the middle column is supposed to be for accessory structures, so the setbacks, thirty-five-foot front yard for a single-family, fifteen-foot side and thirty-foot rear, and for the proposed PUD, it's the twenty-foot front yard, fifteen-foot side, sixteen-foot along the, where the easement is, and then fifteen-foot rear. The proposal would allow certain structures to enter into the rear yard, so that could be a five-foot setback along some of the areas where they allow certain accessory structures to enter into the rear yard. The maximum footprint, a single-family doesn't have any maximum footprint requirements, and the height is fifty feet for principal and thirty-five for accessory. The proposed PUD is forty percent of the lot and then a maximum height of forty feet. And then comparing the buffer requirements, single-family has no buffer requirements for, you know, adjacent uses, where this would have the six-foot privacy fence and a five-foot buffer along it. So just going through the comprehensive plan analysis, the comprehensive plan talks about this area being high-density suburban development, and there is, that blue dot indicates a working waterfront, and it is within our development district. So the planning guidance for, for this, again, the suburban high-density says appropriate for moderate densely, density, moderate dense intensities defined as two units per acre or greater. So that's somewhat unclear as to the type of density that is envisioned by the comprehensive plan. Again, the development district is intended to be our principal area for population growth, and it also suggests sidewalks and other residential amenities are supported, and impacts on local roads should be minimized. So again, the comprehensive plan is somewhat unclear about the type of densities that would be appropriate in this area. Further planning guidance related to working waterfronts, as you all know, we really try to support working waterfronts in our comprehensive plan, and they talk about no net loss of working waterfronts. So this has a working waterfront, but it's been inactive for quite a while. The proposal is to convert it into a privately-owned marina, so it would still provide access to the water, but it would not be a public working waterfront as traditionally known in the county. And then the PUD analysis, PUDs are located where the comprehensive plan identifies for residential expansion, but they also may be appropriate to other areas if the design is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the use, density, and type of development. So that site is located in an area for residential expansion, but again, the density is unclear in our comprehensive plan as to what that would be appropriate. So again, a lot would depend on what you hear from the public tonight in terms of that. So again, the property is located along Marina Way, and just to cover some of the transportation impacts, most of the access to the units would be on the internal road, and there would be some on the Starkey Drive, so that there would be a complete network, sidewalk networks for the internal roads and those units along Starkey Drive. The proffer submitted by the applicant said that they'll provide the two adjacent properties that are internal to the site. You could see them, along the two properties that are accessed will have an easement that would be reviewed by the county to ensure that they have a permanent access from Marina Way, and the conceptual plan has revised to, been revised to show that access easement. In terms of the potential number of units, staff looked at what was recommended for the marina, so that was a hundred and ten trips per day, and this proposes about two-hundred-and-sixteen trips per day, so there would be an increase over what had been approved many years ago, but is no longer valid. So there would be a, an increase in traffic on the road. VDOT and staff, you know, would not be a significant impact. It didn't trigger any requirements for improvements along any of the roadways there. So the street lighting must reflect away from adjoining properties, and lighting can't go beyond any of the property boundaries. Parking standards for townhouse developments would be the standard parking requirements. And again, the right-of-way along the northern border was identified as part of a community meeting and included in the plan. Fiscal impacts, again, these are always hard to, you know, identify directly, but in general, there'd be a positive fiscal impact based on the current marina and the property being redeveloped for townhouse condominiums. So in terms of number of school kids, those of you that are familiar, we've identified or created a internal method to look at number of school kids developed based on other developments. And the one for housing and zoning, we have not a big enough sample size, but in general, the number of school kids projected coming out of this development based on the county and school projection and those provided by the applicant would not be substantial. There would be short-term fiscal impacts based on site construction and indirect tax revenues based on local shopping and use of the property, revenue from personal property tax. Again, fire and rescue, we did not receive comments from them, but we, you know, the units would be built to building code standards, and, you know, the fire department would be able to provide any comments on the site plan during the site plan review. And so in general, a positive tax revenues anticipated and no real negative fiscal impacts. Environmental impacts, this property, they did apply to get a waiver or an exception to go into the RPA and do redevelopment. That was denied by the Chesapeake Bay Preservation and Erosion Commission, so the current plan shows no development within the RPA. They do, are proposing to fix the docks up, and they will be subject to all those requirements during the site plan review and reviewed by the Wetlands Board and VMRC for those, for that work. Other impacts, there are five wells on the property, and they will need a permit to abandon the wells through the Health Department. If there is any onsite sewer systems, which would be probable because there's an existing house, they, it would need to be crushed or filled before constructions. There is a concern about a private well on a property between unit thirty-five and the shared property line. The applicant did provide additional information, and they did, they did move the setback on that side to provide a greater distance from that well. So there were currently is proposed a thirty-foot distance from the nearest proposed structure to that well. The Health Department did provide comments that development would change the drainage pattern and potentially affecting well surprise and groundwater quality, and they recommended either connecting the neighbor to the public water and sewer system or performing an analysis of the impacts to the shallow groundwater by a professional geologist. So that has not been offered, but that was a recommendation from the Health Department. The connection, we did work with our Department of Public Utilities, and they did revise their proposed sewer connection. It will go along, will go from Starkey Drive to west along Tide Mill and all the way up to the intersection of Merrick Drive and Tide Mill Road. And there is sufficient sewer capacity in the system. Other impacts that were raised during the community meeting was that, you know, where would you store boats, dry storage? And the applicant indicated that they would not be allowed to put them, dry storage on the property, so that was included as a proffer statement. Again, the removal of underground storage tanks was provided, that was a condition of sale, and they were removed, and they are working on the demolition of existing covered boat slips and abandoned, the removal of abandoned boats on the property, so those are things they are currently working on. So with regard to the recommendations, the staff did not provide any recommendation in the staff report primarily for the Planning Commission because there were some issues that need to be addressed in the application, which have been addressed now, but also because of the partial alignment with the comprehensive plan. And the public comments provided during the public hearing, there was concerns about the density, traffic impacts, the public water and sewer impacts, and impacts adjacent properties. And all the questions that the Planning Commission raised during the public hearing were addressed in the application that you had before you. The Planning Commission voted with the recommendation of six, with one absent to send this to you with the recommendation for denial. The applicant, again, has taken many steps to address the concerns and answer questions raised at the public meeting and revise their documents to address those concerns. Again, though, they still only partially complies with the comprehensive plan with, related to working waterfronts and the lack of clarity related to the moderate density intensities. But there are several benefits provided to the county through the tax revenues and fixing up of that property, which is currently in poor condition. So staff really recommends you consider it more favorably than what was, was done by the Planning Commission in terms of that the applicant has addressed the concerns that were presented by the Planning Commission and staff, but there were many comments at the public meeting, which the concerns that I raised earlier, and so it's really up to the board to consider the comprehensive plan guidance, other impacts of the development, and the concerns expressed by the citizens at the Planning Commission and, tonight. So it is important to note that this is kind of unique because the application was changed, so you can vote on the, on the original rezoning application that was heard by the Planning Commission to approve that. You can vote to approve the revised zoning application that is in your packet and presented tonight. You can vote a resolution to deny the original rezoning application that was originally heard by the Planning Commission, or obviously to table the rezoning to, if you have other questions or need further consideration. So that's the end of my presentation. Mr. Lang and David Taylor here to address any comments or concerns you might have. So do you want to come up and present yours, or do you want to just wait until they have any comments? So the applicant and his engineer here, if you have any additional comments, but, or questions.
How did the Planning Commission vote on this the first time or the second time if they got it?
They voted against it. So they only heard it once. The application has been revised since they heard it. So it mainly was revised, not substantially in terms of number of units, but to address the concerns with the PUD ordinance and some of those concerns outlined in the slide.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Ortiz. Yes, sir. Okay. All right. Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing for comments. We're opening up the public hearing for comments. Any comments?
Yes.
Comments? Come on now.
How are y'all this evening?
And it's, your public comments, if you're just holding to three minutes or less.
Yes, sir.
If you've sent a letter in, or you've sent an email in, that's going to be read tonight, then you don't have to make the comments because they will be read.
Yes, sir.
Tonight, okay? All letters. Name and, your name and magistrate of district.
My name is Hagan Witt. I live in the York District. I actually live right in the middle of this proposed development. I live at seven nine two five Marina Way. That's going to be caged in by this six-foot fence that's proposed around me. This six-foot fence is going to be about six feet off the back of my deck where my family, my two little kids, and my wife spend time on the back deck, eating dinner in the evenings, relaxing. Also, talking about the well issue, it's going to be actually twenty-five feet. The new proposed buildings is twenty-five feet from my, from my well that actually just got put in, in November. I don't have the extra money to tie into the county water, and I don't want to because of the, the quality of the water. But a couple of things I have written. With the, with the money that they said they're going to revenue for the county with taxes and everything at, I think it was ninety-six thousand dollars a year for taxes. Yes, that sounds great. You got about nine thousand dollars a year for just children going to county schools and everything like that. So you don't have a, you have a minimal amount of, of revenue coming into the county after your county schools are paid for. Another thing, my children, they run back and forth to my, to my father's house, which is the bordering property to the north. We really love that, and that's why we live in Gloucester, to run back and forth and don't have to worry about this proposed development right beside us that we have thirty-five townhomes that you have no idea who's living in. I know it's, it's growth, but that's not, that's not why we live in Gloucester. A couple of things is, with the, with this development, that's thirty-five units, that's proposed to be put down Gloucester Point and Hayes area. You have another thing in Swiss Legacy, which is eighteen units, that's currently being built. You've got the crossings at, at York River, which is in between Tide Mill and Guinea Road, where that's a You've got Tyndale Drive Townhomes, that was just approved, that's another 34. And another potential that's getting ready to come up ahead of y'all is 120 units and that's just on Tide Mill Road. That's just on Hayes and Gloucester Point. So that's something to think about. That's a lot of homes and families that's going to come up just in that small area. That, that's all south of Guinea Road. Thank you all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Connie Shackelford-Like Cone, I live at Gloucester Point, born and raised, lived there most of my life. I did submit a letter, so you said it's going to be read, so I won't go into that. I just want to voice my opposition to this development. I don't think it's well planned. Think there's too many condos that want to be put on too small of an area and just would like to have the people in the room stand up that are, do not want this built to show your support. Thank you. As you'll notice, it's the majority of the people here tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Thank you for letting me address the Board this evening. My name is Mike Kenzner. I'm a resident of York District. I'm here today to express my full opposition to the proposed housing development, Marina off of Tide Mill Road and Hayes. We moved from Gloucester, from Yorktown to Gloucester 12 years ago to enjoy rural life and get away from living on top of one another. What has happened in Gloucester and specifically on Tide Mill Road and the surrounding area is very, very disappointing and to be, and to be honest, sad. Over the past two years, we've seen Swiss Legacy add 18 homes, the Marina potentially adding 34 condos, more condos on Route 17 in Gloucester Point, and we understand there's potentially another proposal off Tide Mill Road for 100-plus homes. Question is, what's happening to our community? I believe enough's enough. Gloucester must not turn into another York County, Newport News or Hampton unless, unless this board changes its strategic view for the county, that's where we're headed. These developments and proposals are ruining the future character of our county and the Gloucester way of life and is changing the way of life enjoyed, enjoyed by generations of families. As you are well aware, increased housing comes with, comes with more crime, drugs and other unlawful activities. Is this the way to treat residents who have built this county over the last five to six decades? How many of you have lived next to a housing area that's under development? I can tell you that we were devastated to learn the 17 acres adjacent to Beckwith Farms and our property was going to be developed for a housing addition. The addition to Swiss Legacy has been ongoing for two years. This disruption to our community will continue for several more years. It has been constant construction, trees being cut down, construction equipment, workers, chainsaws, stump grinders, heavy equipment, beep, 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 all day long from seven in the morning till late in the evening. Trees falling, ground shaking, snoo smell, they've tried to fix it three to four times. Preservation of the wetlands, we don't believe was, was fully considered when, when building these houses. The community is built on much more than tax revenue, although there is increased tax revenue, how much is offset by the additional fire, police, infrastructure and schools costs. While I understand the need for some growth, I believe this particular project raises serious concerns that haven't been adequately addressed. So I'm, I'm getting short on time here, so I'm going to just hit some high points. Infrastructure strain, environmental impact, we don't have enough water pressure where we live, so I'm a little concerned about the comment that was made earlier about the assessment that had been done. I'd be interested in the results of that. Community character and, community character and equity. Condos on the water are often marked as luxury housing priced for outreach for most residents. This plan favors wealthy newcomers over longtime community members. There's a difference between smart development and short sight of profit. I urge the board to reject, reject this proposal. We're counting on you to make the right decision. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Moore. I'm from the York District. I just want to pinpoint just a few of my concerns. I live literally next door to the Swiss Legacy, so I am currently seeing that built, the ruckus and all that going on over there on a swamp. Mike's neighbor that just spoke. The, this new development that wants to take place is across the street from my lane. With that being said, it was previously told that this would bring jobs into the county. That's not the case because all these jobs are built in and outside developer will not be local jobs. I find it kind of odd that a while back, the Tide Mill Bridge was, had to be redone because of the traffic and the bridge was sinking and it had, this was like a couple of years ago. But how can VDOT say that we can take all this traffic on West Lane and Tide Mill when that's already a, a problem? I couldn't hear, the lady that came up here was doing the slideshow, so I'm not sure if she addressed this or not, but one of the concerns were the environmental concerns with the fuel tanks that have been on that property for years and years and they would have to take those tanks up. That's a huge concern for the waterfront and the land and the people that live around it. I have a concern of whether this is going to be affordable, homing, low income, whatnot. When the Swiss Legacy was first taken place, we met in the rain in the woods with Mr. Landry, Michael Hudgens, the landowner, Bay Design, Mike and Shelley, my husband. We were all told that the Swiss Legacy could hook to Beckwith because the county paid for part of the Beckwith sewer and whatnot. After that, now our county supposedly has maxed out on water and sewer. So I don't even understand how this can even come up as a proposal. And also, we live, as I said, off of West Lane and I'm also concerned about this being passed and then another 120 townhome proposals off of Tide Mill. That's going, that's going to be an entrance there. So thank you for your time and I hope you'll take everybody's comments into consideration.
Hi, I'm Taylor Witt, York District. I actually live at 7925 Marina Way, where we're going to be right beside all of this. I'm ready to express my strong disapproval of this project for several key reasons. As someone who's lived in Gloucester the majority of her life, I deeply value the small-town atmosphere that's made this area such a desired place to live. Growing up, I enjoyed the freedom of riding my bike, just being outdoors without the heavy traffic, freedoms that are becoming increasingly rare for children now. They're constantly running their phones, the TV, playing games. They're not outside. Having also lived in Northern Virginia for four years, I've experienced both urban and rural environments and that was why I chose to raise my family in this quiet, safe, close-knit community that doesn't resemble a city. One of my primary concerns my husband and I share is the direct impact that it will have on our two young children. We chose to live in this neighborhood because of the open space and safe environment it offers, an ideal setting for our children to play outdoors, especially going to their grandparents' house. The construction of these townhomes would only hinder that. How do you tell my daughter, who's five years old, who's been doing this her whole life, "I'm sorry, you can't go over there because there's a fence blocking that"? How do you tell her that? She's actually very upset about it. We've talked about it. Population is another issue. Gloucester County is expanding. With more people becomes more crime. I work in Newport News. I work at Riverside, trauma two hospital. We see gunshots, motor vehicle accidents constantly, all the time. Do we want that for Gloucester? We have one hospital here. Newport News, Hampton have two. They have over 10 urgent cares. We have two. Increase in population, what are we going to do with all these people? Are they going to be in the hallways? Do you want your family sitting on a stretcher in the hallway in the emergency room because they're at capacity? I wouldn't. Schools are another big issue. They're already getting overcrowded. Mr. Lang claimed that there wouldn't be a strain on our schools. So you're trying to tell me that 35 townhomes would not bring any new kids? Kids are already riding some school buses, three to a seat. How is that safe? Traffic is another main issue. I sit at the Tide Mill Light for I can't tell you how long at seven o'clock in the morning. It's not something that Gloucester always said that they were, this small town. Just please take that to consideration.
I'm in the Ware District and I don't live close to Tide Mill Road. However, I'd like to tell you a story about my Aunt Elizabeth with whom I stayed many, many days. She had a three-acre farm on Briarfield Road, it's still there, and five acres on this house and three to five acres on the other house next to her. However, they decided to put Section 8 housing and, and high-density housing. And as a home health nurse, I took care of a lot of the people in those housing areas. But my aunt and uncle got old. My grandmother stayed with them until she got too old to go up and down the steps and she went to my other aunt's house. And the point being, when they got old, they were watched. And when my aunt had to go, my uncle had early Alzheimer's. And when my aunt left to go to the store or the bank or wherever she needed to go, they would come over, walk in the house and bully and intimidate my uncle and steal things from the house. My aunt, when she was there, they came in several times and bullied her and harassed her and abused my uncle in front of her. That never happened when I was little, but when they got old, too old to defend themselves, they were watched and they were assaulted, I would say. And also, the concerns about the water and sewer. Apparently, you haven't gotten the message yet that that needs to be handled before any kind of growth can occur. It's like I told my daughter when she was growing up, yes, you can have dessert as soon as you're through with your salad or your vegetables.
My name is Amanda Witt. I am in the York District. I reside at 1953 Witten Lane. We are, I am strongly opposed to this project. My husband Tucker and I reside at the adjacent property to the north of the proposed development. My husband grew up in this house with his family, which is now our home. The Witt family has owned the property and the house for over 55 years. Throughout that time, the adjacent property, which is now the proposed project, was a single-family home and a working marina all those years, the same way that it is currently now. There is still the marina, which is not functioning since it's been shut down and, but there is still an occupied, existing, single-family home. Our son, daughter-in-law and grandchildren also reside at the adjacent property to the proposed project. They purchased a rundown house next door to us, adjacent to the east, a few years ago before marrying to start a family and live close by. They cleaned up the house and the property and renovated it. They even added an addition, which I would like to add, is not shown or represented on Mr. Lang's proposal that you have been given. This house is now their home, which they plan on raising our two grandchildren. These proposed townhomes will greatly and directly impact our current living situation as well, as well as other adjacent property owners and surrounding neighbors. My five-year-old granddaughter asks on a regular basis, why does someone want to fence in my house? The traffic on Starky Drive, West Lane, Tide Mill Road, M17 will become more congested. This will make it less safe for the neighborhood children to play, adults to take an evening stroll, bike ride, walk the dog, et cetera. Property values for those adjacent to the development will decrease, especially due to Ryan Homes being the company selected to, to build the project. This proposed project will not bring any jobs into the county. Ryan Homes brings in their own crew, materials and supplies from outside of Gloucester County. I'm sure if you polled our community and the adjacent property owners, we would all agree that Gloucester Point Marina needs to be cleaned up. It was once and could be again a nice community marina. Stick within the comprehensive plan of the county and keep it a working waterfront, a place for families in the Gloucester community. I know that my comments are more about feelings and community and not about money and business, but I think that most of us here, with the exception of Mr. Lang, would agree that we need to keep Gloucester the, the land of the life worth living. My hope is that Gloucester County's priority is to serve the community and its residents instead of lining the pockets of developers like Mr. Lang who don't have any, any interest in our community, county or citizens. Mr. Lang does not live in the county and is only looking to make a profit and walk away. Please help us keep Gloucester, land of the life worth living. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. Thanks for your time tonight. My name is Tucker Witt, New York District. I'll probably repeat some of the same things that have been said tonight, but being near last, that's what I get. I'm the adjacent property owner next to the planned development, the third and fifth condos. I'd like to give you some reasons to vote no for this rezoning and it's not just because I live right store, right next door. This may be an old analysis, but the, one of the first ones was given is 224 vehicles per day. That's just on Starky Lane. Starky Lane runs into West Lane. West Lane has a daily count of 659 vehicles from 78 dockside condos and 29 single-family homes. That'd make a total of 883 vehicles per day on West Lane. These vehicle counts came from a traffic and impact analysis guidelines as a developer, same as a developer used. I leave for work five days a week at 6:30 a.m., just wait at the end of my driveway now and at least two cycles of stoplights at Route 17. This development will only add more congestion. Developer gave an estimate of revenue of about $96,705 per year. And that's if the units sell for $450,000. There are about 13 that doesn't even have water view, so I'm not sure if you can get $450 for that at all. Estimates about nine children will go to store attend school at the cost of $99,145 per year. That's about $82,000. I got these estimates off the Gloucester County website. At least $14,000 to take care of police, fire, rescue and public waterline maintenance. The planned development has 16 condos, 40-foot high, just 15 feet off my property line, overlooking our pool, which is just 20 feet further away. That's only 35 feet away. That's only half the distance of this room, a 40-foot building looking down, 16 across. And I'm sure there's not one person on this board would really want this developed next door to their house. The applicant has listed four voluntary proffers, water, sewer, entrance into adjacent property, which is already there and improvements to a VDOT entrance. These four proffers have nothing to do with voluntary anything. They have to have public water, they have to have sewer, they have to have access to the adjacent property and they're going to have to have entrances to the VDOT entrances, to VDOT standards. That's only thirty-five feet away. That's only half the distance of this room, a forty-foot building, looking down sixteen And I'm sure there's not one person on this board would really want this developed next door to their house. The applicant has listed four voluntary proppers, water, sewer, entrance into adjacent property, which is already there, and improvements to a VDOT entrance. These four proppers have nothing to do with voluntary anything. They have to have public water, they have to have sewer, they have to have access to the adjacent property, and they're going to have to have entrances to the VDOT entrances, to VDOT standards. The project would not even be considered by the county without any of those proppers. They have to have those to even build it. The applicant has boasted local temporary employment. From what I know from Ryan Homes, they employ very little local help, if any, and purchase materials about the same. Mr. Lang does not live in Gloucester. He has contracted Ryan Homes, a public-traded national company.
Mr. Witt, could you sum up? Your time is up.
Okay. One of the underground fuel tanks mentioned, verbatim, it says, "To the best of my knowledge, they were removed." I don't think that carries with anything. So that needs to be by a professional person. So, thanks a lot, and I appreciate your time. I hope you vote no on this tonight. Thanks a lot.
Okay, Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I had several comments that were submitted from Lisa Hall in Hays. Sorry. I am writing to formally express my concerns in opposition to the proposed construction of thirty-five townhomes in Gloucester, Virginia. While development can bring growth, this particular project raises several issues that could negatively impact our community. One, the strain on the infrastructure. The current infrastructure, including roads, water supply, and sewage systems, may not be equipped to handle the increased demand, leading to potential service disruptions and costly upgrades. Traffic and safety concerns. An influx of new residents will likely result in increased traffic congestion, raising safety concerns for pedestrians, cyclists, and existing residents, especially during peak hours. Environmental impact. The proposed development could pose risks to local ecosystems, including potential loss of green spaces, disruption of wildlife habitats, and increased stormwater runoff, which may contribute to erosion and water pollution. Impact on the community character. Gloucester's charm partly lies in its open spaces and small-town feel. High-density housing developments risk altering this character, potentially diminishing the aesthetic and cultural appeal of our community. Pressure on public services. Schools, emergency services, and healthcare facilities might experience increased pressure, potentially impacting the quality and availability of these essential services. I urge the planning commission, as referenced by the board, to carefully consider these concerns and explore alternative development plans that align with sustainable growth while preserving the unique character of Gloucester. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I appreciate your consideration and dedication to maintaining the well-being of our community. From Amethyst Flippin in Hays. Hi, my name is Amethyst Flippin, and I wanted to write in to state my concerns with this proposed project. I think this project will very much impact our community in a negative way. I have lived in Gloucester County my whole life, with starting in the courthouse and now residing for the past twelve years in Hays. The amount of traffic that we have now, and that has increased in the last couple of years, have been a very dramatic increase. With this project, it will only become much worse, impacting much more, such as class sizes in school, bus load, and increased congestion. Gloucester used to feel so small and homey, and now it's continuing to feel like a city. I would like to thank my voice matters, and this project will be shut down. Thank you very much. From Lincoln and Pamela Strickland on Woody Road. As concerned citizens, we find it very upsetting that Gloucester County continues to approve new subdivisions and townhome communities throughout the county. The addition of all the new residences brings more people to the county and is extremely impactful to traffic, infrastructure, roads, and schools, fire and rescue, police department, water and sewer demand, and other county resources. When does it stop? The addition of new subdivisions and townhome communities just raises our taxes and turns Gloucester into every other congested city or county south of the Coleman Bridge. We live in Gloucester to get away from what is south of the bridge. The approval of the Marina condo proposal will greatly affect the way of life for the neighboring property owners, and especially those with adjoining properties. To approve construction of townhomes just a few feet from an existing property owner's home would be irresponsible. Boxing in the property of Hagenwitz family with a privacy fence is ridiculous, but this entire proposed project is ridiculous. Updating the marina would be good for the county, but approving the addition of thirty-five townhomes towering over existing neighbors is unacceptable and irresponsible. We hope the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does not approve this plan. We hope the board has a better vision and better judgment in their decision-making for the county than has been shown with previous approvals. It seems like it's always about creating new tax revenue at the expense of the county's existing citizens. The only people benefiting from approval of this plan are the ones that will make money from it. From Melissa Jarvis in the York District. My name is Melissa Jarvis, and I live on Starkey Drive. To start with, I have lived on Starkey for almost twenty-three years. The peaceful and small-town feel is why we picked this neighborhood. My concerns for the thirty-five proposed townhomes are the following. I apologize, I think I just lost my place. Traffic. On the proposal, it stated that new total is expected to generate thirteen trips during the morning peak hour and seventeen trips during the evening peak hour. A total of two hundred and sixteen average weekday trips are expected. The addition of the site traffic is not expected to adversely impact the traffic operations of the existing roadway network. That was in quotes. I find this unrealistic. Typically, there would be two cars per home, so not sure where these numbers come from. If a typical home has two adults that work, it could be at least fifty to seventy in the a.m. and p.m. using the existing roads. I am retired and usually go in and out two to three times a day, not counting my husband's trips. West Lane is already a busy road, so it affects not only Starkey. Many people, often with pets and children, walk here in the mornings and evenings, a routine that may end due to expected traffic. Even when it was a working marina, the traffic was minimum and usually seasonal. Tide Mill Road, Guinea Road. Tide Mill Road is already a busy road, being a cut-through from Guinea Road. With the possibility of a hundred and twenty Tidewater homes off Tide Mill and Guinea and the eighteen homes at Swiss Legacy, there will be a huge increase of traffic. Utilizing Guinea Road may also present challenges, as it is frequently subject to heavy traffic congestion. We currently have around seventy-eight condominiums at Dockside that share West Lane and Tide Mill. Schools. On the proposal, it stated, quote, "It is expected that the thirty-five townhouse-style condominiums will have an ineffectual to minimal impact on the school division. Based on information from Gloucester County Public Schools, a maximum of six to nine potential students might be expected from this community. Those six to nine students would be spread across K through twelve grades," unquote. Again, this is an unreasonable projection. They are thirty-five three-bedroom homes. I expect that there may be many more school-aged children than the six to nine. School buses will be coming out of the roads in the a.m. and the p.m. Tide Mill is a single-family home area, with the exception of Dockside, and why do we need to add townhomes and condominiums just for developers to make money in this small area? Myself and surrounding neighbors all enjoy the small, peaceful neighborhood that we currently live in and believe that thirty-five townhomes is just unreasonable for this area. Future projects at Gloucester Point in Hays. There are currently three hundred and fifty-one proposed condo townhomes for the Hays area alone. Seems to me this is too many in one area. And then there is a list of the site plan developments. The crossings at York River, one hundred and nine multifamily approved in twenty-seventeen. Gloucester Point Marina, thirty-five townhomes is the proposed project. River Club at Twin Island, fifty-three units, currently building. Swiss Legacy, eighteen homes currently building. Tidewater Townhomes, one hundred and twenty townhomes between Tide Mill and Guinea Road. Tyndale Drive, thirty-four units off Tyndale Drive, approved. In closing, I understand that Mr. Lang is sitting on a prime piece of real estate, but I believe that single-family homes would be more appropriate for this neighborhood. From Ashley Belcher in Hays. I have great concern about the development proposed at Tide Mill for the townhomes. I think it should absolutely be shot down due to overcrowding, increased traffic, and environmental impacts. These developers are nothing but greedy companies coming to bleed this country, county dry. Does Gloucester County need more rentals? Absolutely. The solution to this is not cheaply made, overpriced townhomes. Take a look at what has happened to Yorkview Apartments. The previous owner, Lori, sold it to an out-of-state LLC a few months ago. In the last few months, we've had an uptick of crime, and this new company has raised the rent on tenants by staggering forty-one percent. These companies do not care about Gloucester or its residents. We already have a congestion issue with traffic, especially in the evenings. Why would we want to add to that? It is absolutely miserable driving on Route Seventeen after four p.m. on any weekday. Our area takes great pride in our watermen and the heritage of the Chesapeake Bay, and we need to consider how detrimental something like this would be to our environment. This project was advised not to proceed by the zoning committee. This should not even be on the table any further. You need to do the right thing by the citizens of Gloucester. Our opinions should be the final deciding factor. From Connie Lynn Cone, Gloucester Point. I have a great opposition to this proposed development in its current form. The company that bought the Gloucester Point Marina property has no interest in the residents of the neighborhood or of Gloucester. The company is out to make a quick profit at the expense of the adjacent landowners. The current plan is incompatible with the current area and is not a good use of what has always been a working waterfront area. The owner's plan to turn the development over to Ryan Homes, which has a very poor rating, one point five stars from Consumer Affairs, and is known for poor quality workmanship in their buildings. This rezoning request should be denied. And then I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chair, that Ms. Chakelford, who spoke earlier, mentioned that she had submitted a letter. She did not submit that letter through the comments, so I do not have that to read. I understand that she sent it to all of you directly.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, those were all the comments.
Right, my dear. Ms. Crowe, okay, at this time, I'd like to...
Mr. Chair, before you...
Okay.
I don't know whether the applicant wants to say anything.
Okay.
He should be given the opportunity.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, staff, administration. I'm going to be very brief and would just like to thank you for the opportunity to have the application brought before you. My name is Daniel Lang. I represent Three Sheets Oyster Company LLC. And I'm here with my planning consultants, one of my planning consultants from David Taylor, who works with Timmins Engineering in Virginia Beach. I'll be pleased to answer any questions that you may have as a result of the comments that have been made. But I just want to make, very briefly, a couple of, if I can say it this way, corrections or clarity. Firstly, I personally approached the adjoining neighbors, those who are across the water, and the Witt family, more than two years ago. Spoke with them personally, walked the property with them, asked them for their opinion about the project becoming a multi-residential development as compared to a working marina. At that point, I wasn't given any negative response. In fact, a meeting was held not long after that at the, Mr. Witt's senior, his offices with family members, where it was discussed that perhaps I might be interested in buying Hagenwitz property. This is the property that's been described as being boxed in. And I indicated that we may have some interest, but it was somewhat premature because we had studies to do. So after some period of time, we indicated that we had an interest and an amount of money was discussed, and then subsequently, nothing happened. The idea that we are boxing Mr. Witt or his family in is completely inaccurate, and I just want to make a very important point here. There is a sixteen-foot easement that separates our property line from the backyard of Mr. Witt Senior, and nothing can be done with regard to that easement. It's a sixteen-foot right-of-way, and it runs from the water. I believe it goes out to West Street. There is no fencing that is contemplated from the portion of the home that Mr. Witt Junior occupies now to that right-of-way or to his father's backyard. No restriction whatsoever. The fencing comes around the front of the property on the cul-de-sac, and then it continues towards the back of those units that would be against Mr. Witt Senior's property. That distance as well is separated from buildings. I've heard it said that it's thirty-five or forty feet high overlooking a house. The distance is a twenty-foot backyard plus a sixteen-foot right-of-way, which is thirty-six, plus whatever the amount of backyard is to the Witt home swimming pool. You can see it on the aerials. And it's all divided by large, full, mature trees. I couldn't see the house if I was on the roof of any of those condos, probably, because it's all blocked by existing trees. We have no interest in doing anything on that easement property, taking down trees or anything else. So I think it was important for me to tell you this because I requested a year or so ago because we thought we might have to have an easement for sewer-sanitary connection, which included then going through a property owned by Church of the Living Word. And I approached the church, and they had agreed to provide us with an easement across to, I think it's the Swiss Legacy connection. And we heard comments at a meeting that we requested several months ago to hear what residents had to say at that point. And there were a lot of good issues raised. When I say good, I mean things that we needed to understand because, again, was suggested tonight that some of these people, residents over in the Swiss Legacy area, have had to put up with smell of sewer and systems not working and all of those things. And I couldn't really have a good response to that in saying, well, if we add thirty-five more units, we're going to make the problem worse. We wouldn't want to do that. No one would want to do that. And so we explored, went back to our engineering department, who then went to York County Services Department and others, to determine that, in fact, there is lots of capacity. I believe we've provided that information as far as our submission here, to provide a direct connection bypassing the Church of the Living Word and tapping in directly into the main sewer. So that will, of course, eliminate this issue of our adding to what is obviously a problem for some people already of the existing developments. We're not adding to anything there. I guess I'd like to just close in a more general fashion, subject to your questions, that this is a development that has been, for the lack of better saying, sort of an abandoned piece of property for almost twenty years. And when the opportunity arose to do something with it, again, we canvassed property owners and asked, would you prefer to have a public access marina on some level, or would you prefer to have something that was more quiet to a person? It was, we'd like something quiet. In fact, our neighbor on the other side of the water said her husband didn't want us to have boat launches anymore. Well, the only way to prevent that is to not have it become a public marina or maintain it, what it is now as a public marina, boat access. So we've listened, we've learned, and we've attempted to mitigate. And that is what the submission that has been brought forward to you tonight, I think, validates. We have, we've heard the residents. Is it what everyone wants? Perhaps not. But we think it's an appropriate level of development for the site. The amount of money that it takes for sewer and water connections is significant. The infrastructure costs are significant. It can't be done with four or five single-family homes, probably. Also, tonight, you've heard a variety of opinions. Some people are worried that these houses will be too cheap, and other people are saying they're going to be too expensive, and certain groups of people who maybe should be able to stay in a nice property on waterfront will not be able to afford that. I'm not marketing these other than to provide a great lifestyle, which includes a boat slip to the purchaser of a home, which I think can be anyone who has the financial wherewithal to do that. And I really think that's what we've tried to do from the beginning, and no hidden agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it back over to our board. Any comments from our board? No comment? No questions, anyway? Yes, sir.
I guess I do have one question. I don't know if this is for our attorney or Ms. Ducey Ortiz, but rezoning this, would this present itself in any way as spot zoning, being that this is completely surrounded by single-family homes?
I think I can answer that. No, not necessarily. Certainly, I think one of the factors that we look at in deciding or determining whether something is spot zoning is the zoning of the immediately surrounding properties. But spot zoning has been defined as zoning to benefit one individual and not more than one or a group of people or the public or the community at large. So if you were to determine that this rezoning benefited more than just the app... So if you were to determine that this rezoning benefited more than just the applicant, meaning benefited the community at large or multiple people, then it would not be spot zoning.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Orth?
I think the bigger issue here, and it's been expressed by people here, but also others that have come to us, is population growth in the county. You know, what are we going to do to mitigate, you know, the expansion of people in this county? And this is one particular issue that we need to address in the bigger picture. I just think that, again, where are we going with this population growth issue in this county? Are we going to be able to control it or allow it to continue to increase and address some of the issues that come with population growth? That's just a concern I have in this whole picture.
Okay.
So the question is, what do we do?
Okay, well...
I mean, we have a number of motions, or what?
What was...
We have some, well, there's some motions under...
Well, Dr. Orth, we have three possible options, resolutions, tonight. One resolution is ordinance to approve the original application, beginning on page 194. We have an ordinance to approve an amended application, beginning on page 211. We have a resolution to deny on page 227.
I wonder if we can hear from some of the other board members? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the thorough presentation by the Department of Planning about the application. I appreciate the community input. That's always very helpful to us. I think that as we consider proposals for development, we have to consider each proposal on a case-by-case basis because in some circumstances, a proposal might be a good fit for a particular part of the county, but in other cases, it may not. And so, community input is extremely important. As citizens who have provided input tonight, you live near this proposed development. You would deal with the traffic. You would deal with the strain on the infrastructure. You would deal with the construction noise. There are myriad of problems that would be posed by this development, and the overwhelming consensus of the local community appears to be no. And the Constitution talks about, "We govern by the consent of the governed, and you are who we serve." And I hear you, and for that reason, I'm going to vote no.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I don't know if any other board members have any comments.
Any other board members, any comments? Mr. Gibson?
227.
227.
Ask for a motion regarding the resolution on page 227, opposing this proposal.
And I'll second it.
Move in a second, Ms. Deal. Any further discussion? No further discussion? But...
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
And just to make sure, yes means no.
Yes means no. Yes means no.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
And Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous to oppose the development.
Ms. Deal, before everyone leave, I'd like to thank y'all tonight for coming and giving us your input. You know, we caught a lot of slack a few weeks ago when we approved some townhomes up near the point, but no one showed up the night that we were doing this to tell us, you know, not to do it. So we really do appreciate this. You know, we listen to you. We hear you, and thank you so much for coming.
Yes.
And again, Mr. Gibson, yeah, Mr.?
No.
No, 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 no. I just want to say...
[laughter]
Okay. Anyway, well, Mr. Gibson made a very good comment about each issue that comes before us really is something that we have to consider, and I do appreciate everyone that came out tonight and expressed their concerns about this development. I was proud to say, no.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess?
[applause]
Okay, next. Next on our agenda, a public hearing to consider an ordinance to waive sewer application fees. Ms. Katie Legg, Director of Public Utilities.
Hi, good evening. I do not have a presentation for you tonight. You're welcome. So just a real brief synopsis, the Hampton Roads Sanitation District, HRSD, received a grant through DEQ for $1.18 million. And the point of the grant was to reduce non-point source pollution in the Chesapeake Bay. And their proposal was to incentivize property owners who were near county-owned sewer lines to connect, to properly abandon their septic tanks and connect to the county sewer system. So they received that grant. It was actually one of the highest-ranking grant applications in this round because of how unique it was. So we have been working with HRSD to identify some property owners specifically in the Gloucester Point area, and as part of the program, a property owner, the structure has to already exist. This cannot be a new construction or under construction. There has to already be a certificate of occupancy. The property owner can go ahead and notify our department as well as HRSD and say, "I want to participate in this program." They will be required to cover all of the costs, they being the property owner. They cover all of the costs of construction, but as part of the incentive, HRSD has already agreed to waive their facility charges, which is their version of the application fee, and they are encouraging localities to do the same. So if, once the construction project is done, it's inspected, it is received into the system, and they become a customer, they can then apply to HRSD to receive up to a $5,000 reimbursement as part of this grant. So the missing piece of all of this is that Gloucester County right now does not have an ordinance allowing the waiver of these sewer application fees. So if we wanted to further incentivize any of these property owners, we would need to pass an ordinance. So you have in your packet some backup material that DEQ, I'm sorry, that HRSD presented to the Hampton Roads Director of Utilities Committee a month or two ago, just for reference. And you also have in your packet the proposed ordinance. HRSD is waiving their facility charges specific to residential properties only. Commercial properties can apply for the up-to-$5,000 reimbursement, but HRSD right now is focusing on residential. The proposed ordinance that you have in front of you has left that open to allow commercial or residential. So for example, on Terrapin Cove, there is a church. That would be considered commercial, not residential. So if there are any changes, of course, to the ordinance, then we can discuss through that. But that is all I have. This has been advertised for a public hearing, and then you have an ordinance in your packet.
Okay. Ms. Legg, we're going to open the public hearing for comments. Any comments? Ms. Crowe?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Not quite yet, Ms. Crowe.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Larry Cohen, York District, and having had a significant amount of conversation with Mr. Bizani, I'd like to summarize some of the mutual thoughts we had. This shouldn't be, have been tabled. This should have been handled a different way, but it's been tabled, and so I have to say that we had here, in the public hearing notice, that the public could review the ordinance by going to www.glosterva.gov. Well, when myself, Mr. Bizani, just to name two, went to that link, it was absolutely impossible to find a copy of that ordinance. It took Mr. Bizani, making several phone calls to people in the administration, before he got the trap door opened up, and he provided me with an ordinance. This is not making it easy for the public to be able to deal with what I consider to be somewhat of a backdoor attempt to get service of the water utility people from the septic owners. This is another simple example of not treating everyone equally. We septic owners pay a lot of money, a lot of money, to keep our projects, our septic systems, in working condition. I have five of them, just because it was the time when Airville was built. The point is that the septic owners take care of their own things. The water owners had a choice. They made that choice. Choices have consequences, and we should not be put upon, as septic owners, to take in any form our money as part of the county providing reimbursement to these utility people. And I very, very strongly recommend that this be tabled to some time later when the citizens can actually read this without having to go through the little tale I told you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other comments? Public comments?
Nathan Brown, Wary District. Oh, the utility system is basically broke. They don't have enough money to make the repairs that the system needs right now. Some of that money that comes from, to come to do those repairs, comes from these application fees. We just raised the application fees to try to bring in more money. Now you're going to start waiving the application fees. Where is your magic mon, where is the magic money going to come from? If the county wants to cover it from your budget, that's fine, but the utilities department doesn't have, can't just give up money that they need to operate the system. We have to take, you know, you have to make it work. And I think this is a whole, this is the weirdest thing I've heard. DEQ, the state, is giving HRSD money to try to hook up sewer customers, private sewer customers, to the public sewer because they think they're polluting the damn waterways. Well, you know, HRSD's on a consent order because they're polluting the waterways. So I don't know where the big advantage is. It sounds like a lot of money just changing hands, but in a lot of these people, $5,000 is not going to do it. You got to abandon your septic system, maybe have to tear it to the ground, you're going to have to run the line to wherever. I don't know. Most of these people don't have a connection always. You have, are they going to have to make a connection to go into the sewer lines? There's a whole lot of costs going to be involved, and they're not considering, because they don't even come to Gloucester hardly. So I think you should reconsider this thing. And if you want to put some money in the county budget to pay for it, that's fine, but I mean, the utility department can't give up the revenue if we're going to keep the sewer and water system running. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We have one comment that was submitted from Dwight Matthews in Hayes. "My thanks to the Gloucester Board of Supervisors for considering waiving sewer connection fees to Gloucester residents who wish to participate in the Hampton Roads Sanitation District Grant Program. I urge the supervisors to vote in favor of the sewer connection fee waiver for Gloucester residents participating in this HRSD program. I have made preliminary coordinations with Ms. Legg, the Gloucester Director of Public Utilities, and with Ryan Radsbinder, the HRSD project engineer. I appreciate and am encouraged with the guidance and detailed information already provided by both of these officials. I look forward to participating in the septic-to-sewer program since I am certain it will reduce pollution on our creeks and waterways." That was all the comments submitted.
All right, thank you, Ms. Crowe. Okay, so, yes, let me, let me just close this. Let me close the public comments, thank you. And turn it back over to the board. Okay, board members? Uh-huh. Yes.
Oh, is it time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just wanted to complete Mr. Cohen's comments regarding this thing, issue on this HRSD. He called me and said, you know, "Philip, I can't, I can't find this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, because that said it was there," but, so I said, "Well, you know, let me try to find it myself." And so I did a thorough search, and I went through, and I tried to find on the website. I just couldn't find it, and I probably just because I just, you know, I couldn't target. I went to the utilities website, I went to everywhere, I just couldn't find. So Ms. Legg was kind enough to do an email. She sent me the ordinance, and I then got to look at it, and then I sent it to Mr. Cohen. But it was in the consent agenda. Gentlemen, I've called out instances where we put important issues like this in consent agenda without the public seeing it. This was something that should have been brought forward. It's a public hearing, and I think the public should get a chance to comment whether they accept or decline this particular ordinance. It was in the consent agenda. You can look it up. I saw it myself. She showed it to me. So, okay, so it's like my Italian father said, you know, "When you're dealing with someone, don't try to hide the salami," which is what happened here. The salami was hidden. So it's a lack of transparency, and we need to fix that. Don't ever put in, don't ever put in ordinances that are potentially controversial in a consent agenda that no one will ever find. No one in the public, unless you went to the specific meeting, and that was the September 16th. If you go to the agenda meeting on September 6th, you will find it. It's in there, and that's how I found it. I think that if you, if, if people who hook up to HRSD sewage system gets a reimbursement, that money comes from the taxpayer, and I believe it's wholly unfair for people who are on septic, like I am, to subsidize someone who's going to try to connect to the public water system. So I propose, I propose that we pull this item out of the consent agenda and place it on a regular agenda so that the public can see it in public and let them get the chance to comment on it. Because if we didn't do this, if I didn't find this, this would have gone through, and you guys probably would not have known about it.
Mr. Chair.
So clearly advertise something like this and reconsider the cost-sharing provisions. Anything less undermines the public trust in this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bizani. Did you have something, Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Bizani, I believe that the meeting, the 16th meeting that you're referring to, that was, in the consent agenda, was advertising for the public hearing for this tonight.
But who would have known about it? Who would have known that this would have required a public hearing? Who would have known? How would a constituent find that?
It said in the consent agenda that we were going to have a public hearing.
That's hiding salami, again, in the consent agenda.
Well, I mean, I hate this...
I don't want to argue, I'm just saying...
Well, I'm not trying to argue either, but I...
Public can't see it. If Mr. Cohen, who's an attorney, could not find it, and I'm just a low-life individual and living in the county couldn't find it, then the public couldn't find it. So there, that's my comment.
Well, I guess my comment was, you were sent the agenda... Well, I guess my comment was you were sent the agenda, the packet last month with the consent agenda, so it was in it that you should have seen it last month.
Well, that's like asking one of my students to say, you know, when you, when you're ready for a test, read all the footnotes that go along with your textbook because the footnotes have important information. I don't do that. Make it public, make, you know, bring it out up front so the public can see. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Mr. Crisco.
Ms. Cronin, do you have the ability to see how we voted for the consent agenda at the meeting? And you can take your time to find that. Thank you.
Yeah, I probably did, I probably did vote for it, but, you know.
So Ms. Legg, I have a question for you.
Yes.
It says in the presentation from HRSD that the disbursements are limited to 1.18 million
Yes.
by June 2030.
Yes.
Roughly 240 homes in the entire HRSD would qualify, or is this just for Gloucester?
That's just Gloucester. So that was from HRSD's initial review of just looking at our GIS map and going, okay, these are not current HRSD customers. Because if you are a county sewer customer, you are an HRSD customer. From that list, we are focusing specifically on Gloucester Point and trying to stay away from the courthouse area. So we could be looking at 150, 175 homes that this would be marketed to. Nobody would be required to do this.
So that's no mandatory?
There's, no, no, no. Absolutely not.
No one's being forced mandatory, nothing made incentive.
This is an incentive program alone, and because the county does not require mandatory connections for existing property owners.
Then my next question would be, because we passed the rate changes and the application fees. On that 150 homes, what is the ish number for the amount of money that we would not receive for application fees?
$787,000.
Thank you.
So if I could, if I could interject one more thing. I watched, we watched this when we did the consent agenda this evening and the one I watched on September 16th. We passed that consent agenda in three seconds.
Well, Mr. Bizani, we all can pull it out of the consent agenda if we want to. You had this way before tonight. You had your consent agenda before tonight. If it was an issue, no, 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 we're not talking about that. We're just talking about in general, any consent agenda you have ahead of time. So if you can, but you can always, then you can always take it off. Pull it. Always, anytime, just pull it off. You're a board member.
You've, you've been here long enough, all of you, to know that several times, at least a couple of times, I've said, hey, take this off the consent. I read through it. I probably missed this one. I'm only human, right? I missed this one. If I missed it, then everybody else in the county missed it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hudson.
I think the critical fact here, it's on our regular agenda. Well, it's for on a, for a public hearing, which was duly advertised, and it's on page 365 of our packet, which is public, publicly available on the county's website. So I think there was ample notice of the public hearing, first of all. Second of all, to the point about the source of the funds, and Ms. Legg, you correct me if I'm wrong, source of funds are not county funds, but a grant.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so this is not taking taxpayer money from Gloucester County residents. Is that accurate?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Legg?
Yes.
Here's a question for you. You, you want to waive the fees, so if I'm going to go into this program, so I'm learning, right? And if I come to you and I say, oh, I heard about this program, and you explained it to me, and I live in Gloucester Point, what is my, what is my buy-in as a customer? I understand I'm waiving, you want to waive the fees that we charge, but as a customer, what is my buy-in? Because the first thing I'm going to say to you is, this program sounds great, it's grant-funded, but I'm sure there's a cost to me to even get in the program. What is that cost?
So to get in the program itself, there is not a cost. There is a cost to construct your sewer line and connection, and that would be between the property owner and the business that they contract with. Got you. As far as just applying to be in the program, you could call our office and speak to customer service and say, I would like to participate in the HRSD septic-to-sewer program. We would take note of your name and property. We would waive those application fees if this is proposed, if this is approved. And construction would commence. Our inspectors would be on site before that connection occurs, just to make sure it's done properly. Once that connection occurs, a new account is created in our system so that we now know your home has sewer service, and you are now going to be receiving a monthly bill for that service. We will communicate with HRSD, and then they will communicate with the homeowner as far as that $5,000 reimbursement. We also collect HRSD facility fees, so it will not be an additional step for a property owner. We collect our own application fees plus the HRSD fees, and then we pay HRSD. We just transfer those funds right along. So that, that whole process will still happen in our office. There will just be no fees collected. Thank you.
Mr. Wilmark?
I read the public hearing notice, page 382 of your packet. It says to get access to the ordinance may be reviewed on the web at www.glosterva.gov. So just now, I went to www.glosterva.gov, and I went to the meeting portal for tonight, and it has an entry for supporting documents, and here's the ordinance. It was on your last meeting agenda, on the consent agenda, to allow us to advertise a public hearing for tonight. It was not on tonight's consent agenda. It was on the public hearing agenda. It's part of the packet. It's easily accessible. I am sorry that if one or more residents didn't, weren't able to, and God knows, I'm not good at this tech stuff, but even I can figure this out. It's right there. An ordinance waiving sewer application fees for applicants to the Hampton Roads Sanitation District Non-Points Source Pollution Reduction Grant Program. So I have a little, I have a little difficulty in accepting valid criticism when it's not deserved. Ms. Legg did everything correctly. I did everything correctly. Miss Steele did everything correctly. The board did. It was advertised. It was accessible, and I'm sorry if someone wasn't able to access it.
Ms. Legg, for clarification, the $1.18 million, that is just for Gloucester?
No, that's for HRSD's program in general. So their focus originally, when they wrote the grant, was to partner majorly with Gloucester County. But they will likely open it up to other localities because there is a benchmark that has to be reached by, I believe, March of '27. And so at that point, if they're not spending down enough of those grant funds, DEQ may repurpose those funds to another grant recipient.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Legg, outside of this grant program, how many customers do you know over the last few years have actually abandoned their septic system to hook onto HRSD?
Since I've been here?
One, two?
Maybe.
Two.
Yeah.
So it really depends on a person's septic system. If they, when it fails, do they put in a new septic system, which is very expensive? Or do we hook into a HRSD thing? So it sounds like people are waiting for the septic system to fail, which don't fail that often unless they've been there for a very long time. And, you know, mine has been in for 45 years and hasn't failed yet. So I can see the, the positive benefit of this, of encouraging people, especially if perhaps looking at an aging system. Were in the case of Turpin Point Cove, I know that was a very difficult decision. I think we were looking at extending the sewer line, and there were a number of people who were willing to hook in, but we didn't have a buy-in by enough.
Right.
And that whole process sort of got shot down, correct?
Yeah.
So we don't have an HRSD line that goes down Turpin Cove, do we?
No, but they can connect into a county line, and then, of course, that gets fed into HRSD.
So there are people down there in the low-line areas that have the potential, if they sense that their system is going.
Yes.
And this is all part of their program. So it's likely we're not going to get 150 people. Like, and so it does offer an opportunity for those that might be willing to hook in, which granted, we're not going to get the money, but it's not a lot because I don't think we're going to get 150 people.
Right.
But it does give the opportunity for an individual that just wrote to us to hook in, and there may be opportunities for others in the past. But I think we have to know pretty quickly, right? Because there is a distinct timeline for this.
Right, so HRSD has already executed their agreement with DEQ. So the program is active. We just have not openly marketed it to specific areas of the county yet because we were waiting for this decision. Regardless, we will still get that information out there as a partner with HRSD.
And from what I can tell, it's pretty expensive for a person to dig a line. Then they got to get that little cruncher thing that's, what do they call it?
Grinder.
The grinder, that mushes things up. Those are expensive.
There, you know, we've spoken to quite a few people that, you know, saw the press about it when HRSD announced that they received this grant. Spoken to a few property owners in the Stallgrass Point area, and they're actually trying to band together to, you know, bring a contractor out and say, you know, can you give us a deal if we're going to do five? Or, you know, whatever the case may be. So I think there's going to be some of those small pockets of interest.
That makes sense. Any other comments? Ms. Cronin?
So on the consent agenda on the September 16th meeting, it was a motion made by Dr. Orth and seconded by Mr. Hudson. It was a unanimous voice vote.
Point is that this proposed ordinance is the resolution that was contained in the consent agenda was in the consent agenda on September 16th. We might, I probably voted on it, I'm sure. You take a record, you take great records, right? But did the public ascertain that, hey, this is coming? Could they find it?
But hold on, it was in the consent agenda to advertise for a public hearing. That was it. That's all that was.
It was just the asking permission.
The resolution is in there as well.
Right, yes, it's, it's in every advertisement of a public hearing. And it existed then.
Not a resolution for the item, but for the public hearing.
Right, so with that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we, I forgot what page I'm on now.
365.
365.
Motion to approve the, on 365.
I'll second it.
Move to second.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
No.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
And Dr. Orth? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Legg. Okay, we're going to move on to our regular agenda. First, we have consideration of ordinance repealing Chapter 6 and 7.5 of the county code and enacting a new Chapter 6 entitled Erosion and Stormwater Management Ordinance. Mr. Wilmark and Mr. Landry.
So if I may, just real quick. Why, why would this public hearing be in the regular agenda? Or instead, instead of just, instead of just putting in the consent agenda? I might be just, you know, just stubborn here, but I, you know.
So it was not in the consent agenda?
This was not in the consent agenda. This is tonight, what we're about to hear tonight.
Oh, well, this one, yeah, that's.
This one's outside the consent agenda. Why wasn't the other one outside the consent agenda on September 16th? That's my point.
Can I answer if, do you? So we have to do public notification. And so in some cases, that can be done without doing a public or, without advertising for a public hearing. I honestly do not remember if we did this one or not because if we're doing public notice, I assume we did, and I didn't. I don't have the big thick packet in front of me. But normally, we come to the board before we would go to a public hearing request. We don't have to, but it's the courtesy that we come to the board and say, may we advertise this? And that's what we did on the other one, and that's what we normally do.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, I'll introduce this topic in a second. I think the difficult task that administration is confronted with is that the consent agenda is reserved for routine items and items not thought to be controversial. So when there is an item on the consent agenda to set a public hearing, it's thought by administration not to be controversial. As you are aware, as each of you are aware, you are each allowed to pull an item from the consent agenda if you think, such as appropriations or school board might add matters. If you think it's, it can be, it should be pulled, you can do that. So I think, and I, I'm sorry it didn't please everyone. I think the reasoning behind the waiver of the fees was it was thought not to be controversial. And say for two people, perhaps it is not controversial. But that's why it was put on the consent agenda to set a public hearing for tonight. So the ordinance was part of the packet. It was part on the line. It's easy to access. This one is a little different. This is also a request for a public hearing. This is on your regular agenda, right? So it's not for public hearing tonight. So yes, there's a difference here. And that difference really came from me because I don't think this should be controversial, but I could envision the possibility that one or more supervisors might have some questions or some changes or some additions. So I, I thought it would be more prudent, I feel like, gee, what, George Walker Herbert Bush? Didn't he say that? At this juncture, I thought it'd be more prudent at this juncture to, to ask you, would you like to have a public hearing? And do you have any input preceding the public hearing? So that's the difference. So what you have in front of you commences on page 384 of your agenda packet.
So I think, just, I'm going to stop the topic, talk about this. But I think the issue was, is that if you're giving subsidy to someone, there's no such thing as a free lunch. Somebody's paying for it, whether it's locality or the Virginia State taxpayer. Well, all of us are Virginia State taxpayers. And if someone's getting $5,000 from HRSD, HRSD's getting it from the Virginia State taxpayer, not necessarily from the local government. That was the contention. That was the issue that came up. And so Mr. Cohen called me and said, hey, this is not right. This is not fair for Virginia taxpayers to subsidize someone else's sewer hookup. And that's why I brought this whole thing up because it was in the consent agenda. Hey, I miss it. Mea culpa, right? I got it. But something like this should have been brought out, and I didn't, I didn't catch it. And I didn't, I would have brought it out if I saw it and noticed it more, but I didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bizani. The materials regarding this matter commence on page 384 of your agenda packet if you're a paper person like me. If not, it's probably on your screen or will be soon. Kevin Landry, the Director of Environmental Programs, is here to present a brief, thankfully, presentation regarding this matter. As I indicated before, this is not for public hearing tonight. It's just an initial foray into this topic. If you approve going forward, a public hearing will be set for the, what, November meeting? The November meeting. Due to recent changes in Virginia law, localities have been ordered to, directed to, or encouraged to consolidate their erosion and sediment control and stormwater ordinances into one ordinance. Unusually, this is not a bad thing. Sometimes when we get dictates from the state, we, we meet it with trepidation and displeasure. This is basically, in my estimation, a good thing. Currently, Gloucester County has two chapters. Chapter 6, Erosion and Sediment Control, and Stormwater Management, which is Chapter 7.5. The purpose of this is to consolidate those two chapters into one because these are logically married topics, at least in my estimation and the estimation of the General Assembly, into one chapter, thereby reducing some regulation, making it easier for the public to access those requirements. Sort of a one document, one chapter rather than two. Mr. Landry here, director, is here, Director of Environmental Programs, to go over briefly some of the changes. As I indicated, there's some regulation reduction, which I think, well, I think is a good thing. And the consolidation, which makes it easier to reference and, and, and to consult, which is what we're trying to do. So, Mr. Landry, after you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmark. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Wilmark indicated, I do have a brief presentation for everyone. Okay, so tonight's presentation is on the proposed consolidation of the Erosion and Sediment Control, Chapter 6, and the Stormwater Ordinances, Chapter 7.5. Additionally, in your packet is a summary of the changes for the regulations that are requirements. That is a document, it's a two-page document, has deeper information. Okay, so briefly, here's the agenda. We'll talk about the history and purpose of combining Chapter 6 and 7.5 into a new Chapter 6. What's out with the old ordinance, what's in with the new, and Gloucester-specific changes. They're not required, but they're very helpful. And just some, a couple items on the horizon that really don't want to get into very much tonight, but something to think about, certainly maybe for 2026. Okay, so history, a little bit of history. In 2016, the General Assembly directs the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, to combine the Erosion and Sediment Control regulations with Stormwater. And at the time, I was not working for the county in this position, I was actually working for DEQ. And, you know, I've lived this world for 23 years, so to speak. And so everything from inspections to program reviews at the state level, and then now managing the environmental programs here, there is a lot of overlap in the erosion, sediment control, and stormwater world unnecessarily. So even then, I thought that was something that this should have been done a long time ago. 2019, we had a regulatory advisory panel meets with a goal to reduce the confusion, the redundancy, and the conflicts between two closely related programs. And then finally, in 2023, the State Water Control Board approved the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Regulations to be effective July 1, 2024. So what's out with the old? Certainly, the removal of the Gloucester County Stormwater Board for appeals. Did you know we had a stormwater board? I didn't know we had a stormwater board. We don't have a stormwater board. We never had one. But our ordinance says that we do. So it was never created in the first place, and the appeals will now be handled in the Circuit Court, the same as the existing Erosion and Sediment Control ordinance is. So there's no more separate Erosion and Sediment Control program or Stormwater Management program. So what's in with the new? We have a new program, the Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program, VESMP. The new Stormwater Management Handbook, 1.0, replaces a shelf worth of handbooks. As you can see, you know, on that photo on the right, that's a lot of information for engineers and other folks to go through, and it's been consolidated into the smaller red document you see on the side there. And it's a lot less for folks to manage. Also, we have an agreement in lieu of a Stormwater Management Plan for farm buildings or structures. We have agreements in lieu of that we do all the time for single-family dwellings. It works out very well. Folks basically sign it saying, hey, I'm gonna follow the regulations, but I don't have to do a big costly plan. And that works out well for folks doing single-family dwellings. And I think it's very good that we have that for our farm buildings and structures to help our farmers out. So it's something that, you know, certainly they want, they need to follow the regulations, but, you know, why make it difficult for them if we don't have to? Also in there is Stormwater BMP inspections for existing installed structures, ensures that they are maintained. We have a lot of facilities out there in some better condition than others. And so this ordinance will help us to have a program, we're working with GIS, to have a database. And we'd like to get that up and running at the beginning of the year. So this will help us to take a look at the bigger fish first, the larger ponds that we have. We have stormwater maintenance agreements on these. And so if we can go out and ensure that they're inspected, they'll be in better shape. Also, a little bit of technical stuff. We have the Virginia Runoff Reduction Method spreadsheet, 4.0, for technical criteria that went into effect July 1, 25. That better reflects the phosphorus ban that we have in Virginia fertilizers. They've taken it out of all the fertilizers here in Virginia. So this methodology is more in line with what is actually going into the water. And overall, our singular ordinance is 18% shorter versus the current two ordinances. And so if you can do the same thing with less, then I think that's a good thing. So some Gloucester-specific changes, just a few things. So we are doubling the stormwater and land disturbance permit fees for after-the-fact permitting. This is certainly, you know, nothing changing to any of the fees that we have currently, but, you know, if you go ahead and do something and come back and, you know, and say, you know, I shouldn't have done that, now I need a permit, yeah, we're gonna double the fact, double the permitting fees for that. And this is similar to the Building Department for Building and Trades permits. So they already do this with all of their permits that they have currently. And one of the things that I'm really excited about is the expanded use of county contract inspectors. And if some of you recall, I was up here several years ago when we first had, we tossed around the idea of county contract inspectors for solar facilities. And at the time, we didn't really have many, except for the Gloucester Solar out of Route 14. That was the only one. Well, since that time, we've had three good-sized projects. And there is no way we could have done and helped maintain the compliance on that site with, you know, the one and a half inspectors that we have in our small department. And so this ordinance would expand the use beyond just the solar facilities. And this would be applicable for any large project over 30 acres, which is about the size of Main Street Landing, with, it has about 130 units. So given that scale on up for that, we would use county contract inspectors. And the good thing is, there's no cost to the county. The expenses would be passed on to the developers, just like they do currently with the solar facilities. And so this helps us maintain our compliance and on these big sites with the limited staff that we have. So I think this is a very good thing, and hoping that we keep that in there. So on the horizon, just something really not really up for discussion, or I'd like to get into tonight, but just something to think about. There's stormwater fees that we can't really avoid for projects. Now, DEQ proposes raising the current stormwater permit fees about 60%. They've figured out that they need 60% more fees to make their budget and the program function reasonably well. And they would adjust those fees annually based on the changes in the Consumer Price Index. Increasing, they're also proposing to increase the state permit fee portion from 28 to 30%. What that means is, the fees that we get in, the entire permit fee, we automatically currently give 28% to the state. So we keep 72. Now they want to take 2% more from us. And that is our local fee that we get to keep. They want to take more of that. They already have the authority to raise those fees, so once that happens down the road, there's really not too much we can do with those state fees. So just something to think about for next year. Do we want to raise those fees a little bit to keep pace?
Mr. Bizani?
I was supposed to let him finish his thought.
Oh, okay.
I was supposed to let you finish your thought, and then ask you a question.
Oh.
Okay. So what, you said that developers would absorb the cost of these fees, right?
For the inspectors.
For the inspectors.
The inspector costs, yes.
But the fees, they want to raise, DEQ wants to raise the fees to 60%. Who will pay for that?
Well, those are, those are the permit fees itself, and those are paid by whoever's the applicant, you know, they pay those currently.
So I, as an individual who wants to build a house, would probably pay this additional fee?
No. I mean, yeah, it's...
It's possible.
It's, well, it's possible, but, you know...
Of course, possible.
But we do keep for the single-family dwellings, we keep 100% of the portion of the fee anyways. So it's not that, we don't have to give it to the state. For projects under one acre, the fees are only for, the $209 fee that is currently paid is for, is for single-family dwellings, only if they're in subdivisions.
Only, so if I decided to build a house on my own personal piece of property that's outside of a subdivision, this would not apply to me?
Right, exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
And also on the horizon, 2026 questions, is the possibility of removing Chapters 62.1 as the watershed map tier approach? We've had this in place for quite a while. It takes significant staff time updating the map over the last six years. It has not been utilized by any plan preparer at all. It's for water quantity, but it has a very limited scope, only for projects less than one acre. And nobody has taken advantage of that. It's just something to think about next year, we can have a discussion on it, but certainly something that staff has spent a lot of time with very little benefit to the public. Now, there's, we have Chapter 66E, that is an engineer certification in lieu of a local stormwater plane review for projects less than one acre. That has been utilized. You know, they have to put a certification that it meets all state and federal regulations. That helps to speed up the approval process, and it maintains compliance. That has been utilized, and that has been very effective. But for the watershed map tier approach, not so much. The only, the highlight of that watershed map tier approach, and I know that's been brought to me question before and the bane of the thorn in my side sometimes, is the DEQ requirement for Beaver Dam Reservoir to be considered impervious. And so a nice thing, they finally agreed with all of us that it should be pervious. And so that helped to reduce the imperviousness of the HUC code in which Beaver Dam Reservoir lies. So that's pretty much all that I have for the presentation this evening. You know, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So I have one question about the fee schedule. When we bring this back, can we get a listing of current fees and what you think it might should be to make it so it covers itself?
Yes, we can have all that. I didn't want to dump that in here because it would, I didn't want to have it be overwhelming or anything, so, yeah, there's a whole chart, even that DEQ has come up as well.
Yes, Mr. Landry, who currently has the responsibility of checking the BMPs around the county to make sure they're properly kept up with?
Well, that's something, yeah, that's something that we currently don't do. We have stormwater maintenance agreements, and, you know, occasionally we'll get some third-party reports here and there, but mostly we operate on complaints.
Okay, so for example...
We don't have the staff to...
The BMP that's behind the old Walmart, which is overgrown, who has the responsibility of notifying them to fix that?
Well, we would with this ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
It's broken, it's dry.
Yeah. And in fact...
It's not dry, it's wet.
I was working for the state many years ago when that BMP did blow out, many, many years ago.
I know they came in several years ago and cleaned it up, but it's now, you don't even know it's there.
Yeah, yeah. It's been functioning okay, but, yeah. I mean, we have a number of BMPs that certainly could use maintenance, and in fact, there's one in our industrial park.
Funny, Dr. Orth, we've had this conversation before along Fort Yousis Boulevard, so my wife and I had to take her car to the Honda place right there on Jefferson Avenue. So this was just after that huge storm we had where the water was coming down with cats and dogs. And we slowed down to look at those BMPs alongside of Fort Yousis Boulevard, and even after all that rain, they were dry as a chip. None of them collected any water. It makes you wonder why they put them things in in the first place. Do they really help? I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Landry, any questions, Mr. Landry? Okay, there's no resolution?
Mr. Chair, a motion, if you're of a mind, would be in order to approve a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to be held on November 5, 2025?
Yes, sir. Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Appropriation of state grant award, NG 911 funding for sheriff's office, no local dollars. Maria Callaway, Deputy County Administration.
Good evening. This is a $150,000 grant that has been awarded to the sheriff's office for their NG 911, which is next generation 911. And this is for, to replace the old analog network to a new IP-based network for this emergency services equipment that will enhance the 911 system. So $150,000, there's no local match, and there is a resolution on page 446.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, move to second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Question, please.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, next. Initial discussion of legislative agenda topics for 2026 General Assembly Session and potential board retreat topics. Ms. Steele?
So I snuck in two topics in one agenda form. The old agenda is in the board packet, and the first thing to note is, just as was just mentioned by Mr. Landry, that under our former legislation requests, which we've had for years, we can strike number three about excluding drinking water impoundments. We can also strike number four on the list below about the Coleman Bridge toll and paying off the debt. I need to check on number six, because, and there's been a lot of things in the press about the automated license plate readers and how much money is being spent, but we did this in support of the Virginia Sheriff's Association and others. I want to double-check whether that is still needed for any of the ones that they're doing.
This camera is different than the ones that are getting all the complaints. Those are the speed limit cameras and work zones and speed, school zones.
Right.
These are a different set of cameras, and we do need to check with the sheriff, because I think these are pretty important.
Okay. So you can look through the list from last time. I would also like to mention a couple new items for your consideration, and I would appreciate feedback between now and the next meeting. I'll have the draft for your review. One is, there's been so much discussion. Now, the wording on it, I'd love to be able to take from somebody else, but looking at the exemption for the real estate tax for the 100% disabled vet and the exemption of the one vehicle and the personal property tax, that could be, if you all want to carry that, as you know, VACO and VML are going to, whatever we say would probably get words spelt, because they'll be the ones really doing the work. But it could be looked into, it could be that it's just stating it's a crisis for us, you know? If you have some suggestions, but I know that has been one that we've discussed a lot that needs to be addressed. There's another one that you may or may not want to support, and if I get head shakes no tonight, I won't even consider anymore, but as you all are aware, there is a current cigarette tax. Our neighbors across the river are trying to modify that to a tobacco tax because of all the vape shops and others that, funds that they are not receiving, where people who are smoking cigarettes are getting penalized and have been complaining to their groups. So that's something we can say if you want to, and we get to the retreat topics when we talk about revenue. I'm gonna bring it up just with the latest information on how much is collected in the other localities. I know that the board was not interested in that, nor plastic bag tax, but when we look at all the revenue sources, I just want to make sure you're aware and still on that same path. So is there anything, does anybody have any objection or any feelings about the change in the cigarette tax to a tobacco tax for those who collect it? Not, stay out of it? I'm fine with it?
Are you saying you want to impose a tax? If I understand correctly, are you trying to impose a cigarette tax here in local Gloucester County?
No, I'm saying that to support the other Hampton Roads communities who are asking for the legislation of the current law to be changed to a tobacco tax, not a cigarette tax. It's still an enabling tax. The board decides whether to charge it and meet the criteria for it. It's just their feeling is they're missing out on revenue and the expenses, the health expenses to whatever else is going on, is with vaping and other things. If I don't hear any strong yeses, I will not touch it. Another one that I, and I want to also remind you that you did receive directly Clean Community requests on their items, and I'll be reviewing that as well, and then, of course, you'll hear the schools. One other one that I would like to have more information before I get the draft is a potential request for funding of a feasibility study for the use of the TC Walker House. This is something that Bill Thomas from Hampton University, that several of you all know, has been asking for. This is like, if we can get a study to show the finances of what would work or not. There's a couple of different things that we've discussed. They've been brought up over and over again about potential uses, but it would put it on to a financial plan to see if it would really work. And we are looking to see there may be a grant... And we are looking to see there may be a grant that would be, we could apply for, and if that's the case, we don't need to ask for any special funding. Um, and then, I was really glad that Delegate Hodges brought up about the Gloucester Point Corridor. The, the reference on the, the, um, removal of the tolls, the plazas, it's going to be a little bit of time. They, you know, they told us, we don't have an exact plan. They're still working on a plan for it, so we don't have a date. But I, we did, um, try to put in some, plant some seeds, uh, last year that we needed to, to change the corridor. It's the gateway to the Middle Peninsula. I don't, I, I think our senator is, uh, interested in helping us, but I'm not sure if we could get special funding or not. But if a senator and a delegate puts it in, we might get some special funds.
But delegates?
True, delegates, and especially because we got one that's just right there. And I know, I'm, I'm sure that Delegate Green, if you, you know, would do the same thing. And that's really all I have. I, I would like to, um, work it up a little bit, but I, I just wanted to make sure if there were any other hot topics or things that you felt like we really needed to take off versus keeping them on for the, as they have been in the past, until we get to strike them. Sure.
So, so coming across the bridge, coming into Gloucester, why can't we put one of those nice, beautiful blue signs, "Welcome to Gloucester County"?
Well, that's the, that would be.
Instead of that vinyl sign that's put up, that's so ugly.
Well, I, I'm sorry you think it's ugly. I'm so proud of it because we've had nothing.
I know, I'm just saying.
And our staff did that for.
It's just still ugly. It should be a brick, a brick stanchion with the blue in the middle like we do in Gloucester Courthouse.
So, um, I think the whole corridor needs to be looked at, and I've, uh, put a couple of different present.
I didn't mean to smirch.
No, I, I mean, I, I think it's, I'm, I'm glad we have something that recognizes coming into the county. And of course, we do have a "Welcome to Gloucester the Chamber of Commerce" sign later on, but the whole gateway needs to be looked at from a landscaping. And so, um, that's exactly what we're talking about, is trying to get some additional state funds. When you look at where those toll plazas, and they're going to move everything, that's the time for that, where they could help with that.
Where, where, okay, so they, we would be able at one point to put one of those nice, uh, stanchions in "Welcome to Gloucester County" with the brick, brick side and the blue interior?
Um, I.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, possibly.
This is D O T.
Um, it's, it is, it is their property, and we have to have a permit for it. And so, all of this, again, working with the, the state, with the Department of Transportation.
Well, all of our blue signs in the courthouse are on state property too, right?
Right, we have permits for those.
What difference would it make?
Um, biggest one is brick, because our signs are all breakaway.
Brick, right.
And you have to have enough space, and if you think about where the Chamber of Commerce sign is, it's quite off the road. We don't have that much space right now where we are, but again, with some restructuring with the roads, I'm not sure what would be possible.
Okay, okay.
All right, then, uh, just finishing up on the, the, um, potential topics for the retreat. Um, we've heard over and over again, let's talk about the growth, and we're very excited about preparing this information for you all. We're going to start with your, if it's agreeable to you all, to start with a look at the revenue and what's really going on and what is projected. And then, because that relates to everything, of whether you want to grow, don't want to grow, whether you, whether we have money for other things. Um, uh, looking at the, the growth from the perspective of zoning and using that for controlling growth. Also looking at where we have some inconsistencies with where our, um, development districts are, what our utilities capacity is, and then looking at the transportation and Route seventeen, and then affordable housing. Um, we had a possible, uh, follow-up, and it was requested that, he's not going to be ready, and, and I agree, is if we could hold off a little bit on the alcohol on county properties and looking at that, um, Matt Barber needs some more time. So, are there any changes you'd like to make to the topics or things you'd like to add?
Mr. Crisco? For the, when we do the county revenue sources, I think we should have the discussion from the, um, info. Maria, Ms. Callaway presented our last meeting to move that post-audit, so she's not doing the numbers two or three times.
Okay.
Just have that brief in there so we can fix that then and, and, and get it when we know it's more finite.
Okay.
So, are we having the retreat before December thirty-one?
Yes, we're having it November twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Just questioning, would it be more appropriate to have it after we've got a few boards?
The idea is that they will be there, and whoever is elected is invited and would be there to start geared up.
Fairly.
I would, yes. Um, I hate to even bring it up tonight, I swear I do. But, um, I would like some of the items, like for, um, eleven-B, where it's appropriations of a state grant with no matching dollars. I'd like to evaluate that, put that in the consent agenda for next year. And like I said, I hate bringing it up tonight, but there's no matching dollars. I think we really need to do those in the consent agenda. Because, I mean, Maria was, Ms. Callaway was up here for two minutes, and it was boom. So I think those types of items, if there's, if there's county money being paid or put part of it, then yes, bring it up in the regular agenda. The other thing is that while we're looking at it, and Ms. Callaway, looking at county revenues and sources, I know years ago, we made a tremendous increase in B-pole taxes. Maybe if we could just look at those and maybe if it was an incremental change, what it would do, and look that brown.
It, I will also, I think that's a good idea. I also want to mention that it was, we were asked to get some additional information about the boat tax, and I've said to you all that a, that potential proposal maybe, uh, for you to consider of a boat fee versus a boat tax, which is a, which is what the other localities have done, many of them.
When Mr. Fedoras were here, didn't we look at changes of the B-pole tax?
Yes, but, but we, they were tremendous increases, and some of the, some of the taxes increased four-hundred percent.
Right, right, right.
So, I mean, if it was a modest change versus.
The dramatic change?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we just don't want the whole county in the situation that we're in with utilities, that things just kind of get bigger and bigger as we postpone, and we have a lot of infrastructure that's older. So we want to make sure we know what our revenue sources are and, you know. Okay, well, if anybody thinks of any other topics or any other legislative matters, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, discussion of consideration for FY twenty-seven budget meeting calendar. Ms. Steele and Ms. Cronin?
I guess I'm just going to be right off the bat. At the last meeting, I had given you all a handout with calendars for next March and April with some of the considerations that you had brought up before, that we had heard from you over the course of time. Um, in the packet tonight, I put two different options where I tried to lay out some possible dates. Um, they include some of the dates and assumptions between option one and option two. Both of them assume that the, you make a decision on what tax rates to advertise after the, or at the end of the joint meeting, like you did this year. They maintain the two definite and two possible budget work sessions and a separate budget adoption meeting. Keeps the adoption at the end of April to allow the maximum amount of time for the commissioner of revenue to complete the land book. Um, and both, they have the county administrators' proposed budget presentation on March ninth, which is the week before the joint meeting. And then the budget and tax rate public hearings, the week of, um, on Monday, April thirteenth, which is avoid, uh, avoid spring break. And then, the main differences between the two, in option one, I've got the town hall scheduled on March twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, which is prior to the first budget work session on March thirty-first. And that expands the length of time from the first budget work session to budget, proposed budget adoption on April thirtieth. It gives you a full month. Um, option two switches that, holds the first budget work session on March the twenty-fifth, and then has the town hall after that. The benefit to having it that way is the public hearing notices will have hit the paper by that point. Even though that's not the public hearing night, it gives the public something that they will have looked at, um, in the ads for the town hall portion. And then there was a comment made last, um, at the last meeting about avoiding spring break altogether. For your regular board meeting would be scheduled that Tuesday, April seventh. So in option two, I've moved the regular board meeting to Tuesday, March thirty-first. You could also choose to cancel that, or you can keep it as it is on, on that Tuesday. But it was, there was a comment last meeting, so I just want to make sure we address that. So if there's a consensus or discussion, one versus the other, or we can, you know, move meetings around. Normally, we will have that resolution for you to adopt the FY twenty-seven budget calendar at the joint meeting on October twenty-first.
Mr. Crisco?
Is it possible, Ms. Cronin, because for the last fourteen-ish years that I've served on the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, that I have missed a meeting every year for either our budget town hall or a budget work session on that final Wednesday of March? Is it possible to move either the town hall to the Thursday, the twenty-sixth, or on the second one, move the budget work session to Thursday, the twenty-sixth?
That should be possible. I don't believe that the school board had a tentative work session on that date. Normally, when they add their work sessions, it's on that Thursday, but I think when I looked at their tentative schedule, their work session was the twelfth.
Twelve.
Um, so I can certainly look at that.
Because if we want to do option two, this one could possibly, we could move the budget work session to the twenty-sixth, which I, I like to have a work session prior to a town hall. I prefer option two, if we could do our budget work session on Thursday, the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Does that sound good to everybody else? And so that would be moving your regular board meeting to the thirty-first, taking it off of April seventh?
I don't know if we've ever moved our, well, yep, I, I have no problem with moving it to the, to the thirty-first to have it, so that anybody who wants to can travel on spring break.
And that's not actually a decision. It's just for my own purposes, because you're, you'll adopt your regular meeting schedule at the organizational meeting in January, at the first meeting in January, so that meeting would actually, could be shifted at that time.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to board appointments. Okay, we have three to consider. The Board of Equalization, they have no volunteers. Board of Equalization, uh, historical committee, no volunteers, none. Uh, clean, green, we have one.
Motion to reappoint.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, moving on. County attorney item.
Just glad to be here.
Thank you, glad to have you. Okay, board and commission reports. Any board or commission reports? None. Supervisor discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Wilmot, stay, seeing that we've been here going at this for three hours, um, I know we have two items in our closed meeting. If we were to remove the personnel matter portion of that and move it to a subsequent meeting, would that have to be our first meeting? Or could we do it at a work session?
We could do it at either.
Either, either one.
So, do you guys feel like taking the personnel matters and doing it at our work session, um, in two weeks?
What's on the work session, women area right now?
So that will be the joint meeting with the school board. They'll go through their, um, back-to-school information, what their numbers are. I think they'll be, I'm anticipating a special focus dealing with the, um, career and technical education programs that they would like to see expansion. We've taken two recent field trips and have, and that kind of a thing could be an early discussion. I, I, I think they would like to see a committee formed, potentially, to study that.
Mr. Wilmot, with reference to what Mr. Crisco said, can we read in as it is? And if the first item gets lengthy, not discuss the second?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'd, let's do that, because I think it might be a little more difficult for a closed session at TC Walker.
But we could move it all the way to our first meeting in November as well, because I.
It's already September.
October, shoot.
It's October.
That's why I said November.
So with or without?
I mean, what's. I'd say read in with it, and if it, the other goes lengthy, I mean, I don't care. We can go November. We can go December.
Or never.
More numbers.
I'm easy.
More numbers.
I have no objection to going, moving it to November.
Yeah.
Okay, November.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. All righty. Okay, next on our agenda is closed meeting. Mr. Wilmot, will you read us into our closed meeting?
Yes, sir. The modified version appears on page four-sixty-two without the modifications. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting on October seven, twenty-twenty-five. And whereas the nature of the subject is new fire station, more specifically, discussion of acquisition disposition of interest in real property, investments of public funds, and consultation with legal counsel, such discussion in closed meeting is expressly permitted by Virginia Code, section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven, A-three, six, and eight. Now therefore be resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purpose herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority herein recited.
So move the second.
Move the second.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Close session.
Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion in closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting. And whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting. And the only subjects heard, discussed, or considered in said closed meeting were the matters identified in the resolution by which it was convened. Now therefore be resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby reconvene in open meeting at its meeting of October seven, twenty-twenty-five, and certifies the matters set forth in Virginia Code, section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-twelve-D.
So move the second.
Okay. All in favor?
No.
No poll, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Orth?
Mr. Hudson? Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.